Call to order, Ms. Santiago, can you please call the row?
Greg Stallings?
Here.
Can you get them?
Here.
Karen Taylor, Julio Flores?
Here.
Chanti Brody?
Here.
Asian Clark?
Juan Hernandez?
Here.
Kim Mulialman?
Here.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for being patient with us. We are again testing this new system before the regular school year and hopefully we'll get everything down pat. So we are starting on time. Our mission and our goal is to stump properly on time, 5:30 or 6 o'clock whenever the meeting time is scheduled. So from there, I'll just read my statement. As Chairman of the Harvard Board of Education, I hereby call to order the August 21st meeting, regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present, to our TV viewers. The Board, the Superintendent and I are pleased that you've joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to effective operation of the Harvard Board of Public Schools. This is a regular meeting and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by state law. As the Harvard Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, excuse me, and make policies for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Board are open to the public. They have been a time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorum and courtesy are important elements in every effective meeting. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that these proceedings be accurately recorded, I may ask for order periodically should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken the time this evening to join us. We are very proud of our school system. We thank you for your interest in the Harvard Public Schools. And I'm Mr. Flores, read this in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford... Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 21 de agosto de 2018. Damos una calidad bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y la superintendente se complacen que se han unido a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en estatal de han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y abstengase de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que negamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford.
Thank you. And Ms. Glanville? Right. Usually can't read. Who has the Karen script?
It's on there.
That's why this is a soft opening.
Yeah, I can't get on at all, so.
We as a Board in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously and to that end, we will have staff available for immediate follow-up if follow-up is required. After you have finished speaking, a staff member will come up to you, ready to take your information down. They will follow up with an update within 48 hours. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak. At the two-minute mark, Ms. Santiago will ring the bell letting you know that you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now Mr. Julio Flores will read this in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford, y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Tenemos personal disponible para seguimiento inmediato para los casos que lo requieren. Una vez que usted haya terminado de hablar, un miembro del personal estará disponible para tomar su información. Esa persona investigará su caso y se comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Recordamos que tiene tres minutos para hablar. Cuando hayan pasado dos minutos, la señorita Santiago sonará el timbre dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios.
First, Michael Downs.
Evening, Board members. Welcome again to my neighborhood. I'm Michael Downs. I live at 74 Rosemont Street. I noticed that there's a different arrangement on the agenda. And I guess it's okay. Everything has to change. But it'd be nice if the different items on the agenda had a page number and the page number was on the front, sort of like a table of contents, so that we could quickly turn to them and get an idea what they're about. Then I also, I noticed that there were a lot of changes in Central Office. I went to, a couple of weeks ago, I started to inquire as to the Substitute Teachers Professional Development Day and discovered that many of the people that were involved in preparing our professional development in June were gone. So I had to figure out or find out who were the new people. But Anastasia and I were able to finally get something, cobble something together and so we're all set for Friday. And one of the items on the agenda is Weaver. I noticed that all the alterations and additions are supposed to be completed by the beginning of the 2018-2019 school year, which is next week. But is that correct or is it that there's a mistake there and it's really supposed to be the 2019-2020 school year? But anyway, I guess Weaver's going to be ready for next year and that'll be good. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, Santiani.
Good evening, everyone. Superintendent, Board members, I hope you had a restful maybe couple of days, hopefully, so you can get back and re-energize yourself to get back into the task ahead. So, good evening, everyone. So I'm Hiya Santiani and I'm a part of the SGC at Hartford High. And I'm here because I just want to, just not a lot to say, but just want to say that I happened to meet our new, hopefully appointed principal to be at Hartford High. And I am, you know, a little concerned about the rush that we had to do, but the fact is that we will have to work with him to get him where he needs to go. And my most important thing is, Superintendent, is to make sure that he has the wraparound service he needs to make him successful. Because one of the things we, as a district, most times do, we set people up for failure and we can't afford to do that. I mean Hartford High has gone through a lot of changes, a lot of principles. And, you know, for once, I would love to know we have somebody that would stay around. And, no, no, just talking to him over there a while ago, knowing that I know where he came from and I think he can do it, because, you know, when you know where you came from, you have a lot more in common with the kids that you're dealing with. And I think that's really important to understand. And, you know, interview for a couple of minutes or half an hour doesn't tell you about a person until you sit down and really actually talk to that person and see where that person is coming from. So I'm hoping that you will make sure he has the service. And, you know, as SGC, we are going to make sure, you know, he's supported and you will hear me come to this Board again and talk about if he's not getting the service to do the job that he needs to do at Hartford High. And as we know, Hartford High is not, you know, the school where we can say, "Okay, yes, just get over there and get the job done." It's a lot of hard work and he's going to need support, okay? So I'm hoping you will provide him with the support he needs to get the job done over there, all right? In the meantime, I'm still hoping that you'll keep Ms. Green or whatever to help him, you know, into transition, so he'll understand what he's getting himself into over there. And I think he's capable of doing it. We have the CBO over there, you know, and things like that. So I think he'd be okay if he gets your support, all right? And he can work with his staff and make sure they're all on board with him to get the job done. Because at the end of the day, it's all about our kids. We want to make sure they're succeeding when they leave that building. So the goal is to make sure we have a great leader and, you know, when you're at the top position and it's not working out, you know, it trickle down to everybody else. So I'm hoping that we'll make sure that he has that service he needs to get the job done, all right? So we'll be here. I'll be here, okay?
Thank you.
I'll have a good evening.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much. And so moving on to the next session, reports. Report of the Chair. I am going to actually keep it brief because I have a written report for the next meeting. So I'll simply just say thank you to all of the community-based organizations that employed our youth for the summer, Blue Hill Civic, the, shoot, I forgot many of them now, CRT, the Hartford Pro-Am, you had the, Kim, what's the name of the?
Our Piece of the Pie.
Yeah, Our Piece of the Pie, and many others. So like I said, I'll do a formal thank you for them, but it was an extraordinary offer and we need to continue to maximize our youth experience throughout the year. And so I'll probably be on a soapbox for that for the next six months. So I'll take it easy for today because I'll be on my soapbox for next time. And that is my report. Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman Stallings. Good evening, everyone. So I will borrow your time, given that my report is somewhat lengthy. I am only reporting for August, but we have been very busy in August, so please bear with me. The Learning Forward Foundation, we as a district are entering our third year of the Learning Forward Foundation Scholarship. It's a $20,000 scholarship, and though it seems, it sounds like it's a small amount, know that this scholarship allows us, shows us actually, coaches the district on how to plan, implement, and measure high-quality professional learning for our adults. Learning Forward is the only professional organization devoted exclusively to those who work in educator-professional development. And so they help their members leverage the power of professional learning, adult learning, for lasting change. On August 10th, we had a MARB meeting, as you all know. We have to present at the Municipal Accountability Review Board. And although the MARB does not take any action on our budgets, they do take, they do comment on some of our contracts over $100,000. And during this meeting on August 10th, our budget was closely examined and the major discussion themes were around the costs associated with our special education tuition, especially transportation in our out-of-district placements. There was a lot of discussion also around our upcoming bargaining contracts. The members of the MARB also spoke positively about our efforts as a district via the work that we've done through the district model of excellence to restructure the district while balancing, you know, fiscal prudence with need to improve outcomes for our students, which is challenging for us to do. But they acknowledged our efforts towards that. We had our new leader induction and we hosted a retreat with three new acting principals and six internal promotions that we had to assist in principles. And the session included knowledge around curriculum, operations, finance, and other relevant information for our administrators. We also had my retreat, my Cabinet's retreat. It was a two-day retreat that was focused on making sure that my team, the Cabinet team, is ready to achieve excellence as a team, so that we can accelerate the progress of the district. We also took time to really understand what it means to be a trauma-informed district. We realized that last year, a lot of the professional learning that took place didn't happen at the senior-most level. Many of us at the senior level have an understanding of what trauma-informed practices are, but we hadn't done that learning together. And so we had to pause, take time, to really have an understanding of what that is. And also, as part of our Cabinet retreat, we spent a lot of time unpacking the book, The Five Dysfunctions of a Team. That is a framework that I have used along with my formal training on group and team leadership development. And we really focused on how it is that we're going to work as a team to avoid the dysfunctions of a team. And so we want to make sure that we continue to build our trust as a team, that we engage in courageous conversations around what the data is telling us, and that we engage in conversations around our own practice and how we're supporting each other as a team, as a senior leadership team, and that we maintain our focus on results, meaning focus on accelerating progress for our students. We had our end-of-year monitoring meeting at the State Department of Education. As you may know, we do receive from the State Department of Education funding under the Alliance District Funding. And these monitoring meetings entail accountability dialogues around the progress that we have made and around the growth areas, not only in individual schools, but also as a district. And senior leaders at State Department of Education also complimented our senior leadership team around the efforts to align our strategic priorities. And so I just wanted to highlight and give kudos to the Cabinet for the hard work around that. We had a three-day Administrators Institute mid-August. This is when we welcomed about 120 of our school building leaders from principals, assistant principals, and deans. And it was three days of intense work around our priorities, what that looks like in their schools, and then our work around engaging as a team, as a broader district leadership team, around specific strategies that we're going to focus on. We have identified literacy, as you all know, is one of our major goals, and we want to make sure that we have shared practices that across all of our schools we're focusing on. And so we are starting to build that shared language around guided reading, which is a certain instructional approach in the pre-K through sixth, and then close reading for our higher grades. We also started the work around our data teams, know that every school, every administrator is now equipped with our data dashboards, and we had to do some learning around using those tools. And then also, and so I want to acknowledge the team as well for their hard work and their commitment to leadership practice. So when you see one of our administrators, check in with them and give them kudos as well for being there, committed to three days, full intensive days, fully engaged in the learning. Thank you to our United Ways Stuff the Bus partners. They have stuffed the bus with school supplies for our students. They had all their volunteers assemble at Burr School and sorted and donated a ton of school supplies for our students. And today, the New Teacher Academy culminated four days of induction and onboarding for about 70 new certified staff members. And just for comparisons, all the other districts don't usually do something for so long. And so we made sure that we developed a really intentional onboarding and professional learning for our new leaders. And everyone on our Cabinet and all of our departments engaged with our new staff around our priorities. We thank Chairman Stallings, Hartford Federation Teachers, for engaging and welcoming our new teachers. We've had a variety of back-to-school events in response to our families' feedback to us that we should start taking our events directly to their community, instead of parents coming to us for the event. And so we tried that in August and had quite the successful community events around back-to-school celebrations. We partnered with the city Parks and Recs Department at Parker Memorial, and we had over 200 families in attendance. And last week, we gave out over 370 backpacks and literacy supports to our families at the Arroyo Center. So I want to congratulate our engagement team for their hard work and for taking good care of our families as they gear them back up to come back to school. Lastly, just an update around funding for displaced students. As you know, we welcomed about 450 students that were displaced by the hurricanes. And we did, funded the cost of welcoming the students and educating the students as part of our general budget. And we, of course, incurred $3.1 million deficit as a result. The federal government had declared temporary emergency aid for the displaced students program. And we heard officially last week that the federal aid that we are expected to receive is $2.3 million. And so, you know, it is a little short based on what we, the $3.1 that we actually spent, but know that it is only about $150,000 short from what we have projected in our budget. And so the good news is that we have some funding that's coming back. Had we not received that funding, we would have had, as you know, a deficit going into the year. So we had a placeholder in our budget for that money. That concludes my report. Thank you.
I was trying to take notes. Okay. All right. I don't have any committee reports here, but if there's a chair who wants to talk about anything related to their committees or any Board member wants to use a point of privilege, and we have our student representative.
So my summary is very brief, but so far sadly, summer is coming to an end, but the Student Senate is very excited to get to work. Last time I spoke, I talked about the Student Senate as well as our peers' food concerns. Throughout the summer, I have been in contact with Ms. Burt, who is the Director of Food and Children Nutrition Services. She will be joining us on September 5th, which is also our first official meeting of the school year. With Ms. Burt, the Student Senate will be discussing a working plan for the year for things like taste tests, menu evaluation, and planning, and nutrition education. We look forward to working with Ms. Burt and her staff and as voices for our peers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. So we're going to move on to a business agenda. Administrative appointment. Give me a minute, let me just move on here. All right. So we have administrative appointment, Principal Harper High. Mr. Anthony Brooks, Madam Superintendent.
So Anthony Brooks, I will ask Chief of Schools, Yvette Avila, to join Mr. Brooks for the position of principal at Hartford Public Schools. Ms. Avila, can you give us an introduction around Mr. Brooks before we engage in any comment?
So, good evening.
Good evening.
Superintendent and Board members. It's a pleasure for me to introduce Mr. Brooks to our community. He has had an extensive background in regard to turnaround practices. And in that practice, he has demonstrated the ability to use data to improve practices, develop really positive cultures where all stakeholders are involved in that culture to support the community in developing a culture of achievement. He has made impact on teaching and learning. And his primary vision is to work collaboratively to create equitable conditions which entail high expectations for all students. And in order to achieve our goal and priorities in our community, we need strong leadership. It is imperative that we have leaders that understand our turnaround principles and practices and strategies and are able to implement them effectively, and Mr. Brooks has demonstrated that.
Can I also add that Mr. Brooks was actually initially recommended by an SGC for another school. And during the interview process, we identified him as a strong candidate, potential candidate for Hartford High. So I just wanted to add that.
And I'd like to add one more thing is that Mr. Brooks has been a dean in Hartford and would be coming home.
Okay. Is there any question or comment from the Board? Let's say comment first. Any comments? Any questions? Ms. Brody.
And I'll tell the truth. So I have a daughter, she's high school, and she does have friends that attend Hartford High. And she has, like, texted me in the middle of the day, "Ma, you need to do something about Hartford High." And I'm like, "I don't know what you think I could do." But just for her to talk to her peers and have concerns, so I'm looking forward to see what you're going to do at Hartford High. There's some young people there that need you. There's younger people there, like everywhere, that needs to be successful. They need to leave there with the skill set that will have them be successful as adults. So I think I can speak for the Board with saying we support you. We want to see wonderful things happen there. And I know when you're not getting the support you need, Ms. Yenney will let us know, so I'm not worried about not knowing. But just to let you know that you have some Board members that are really concerned and we really want to see some great things and have the students just get what they deserve.
So I just wanted to add that.
And I'd like to add one more thing is that Mr. Brooks has been a dean in Hartford and is, would be coming home.
Is there any question or comment from the board? Let's say comment first. Any comments? Any questions? Ms. Brody.
And I'll tell the truth. So I have a daughter, she's high school, and she does have friends that attend Hartford High. And she has like texted me in the middle of the day, "Ma, you need to do something about Hartford High." And I'm like, "I don't know what you think I could do." But just for her to talk to her peers and have concerns, so I'm looking forward to see what you're going to do at Hartford High. There's some young people there that need you. There's younger people there like everywhere that needs to be successful. They need to leave there with the skill set that will have them be successful as adults. So I think I can speak for the board with saying we support you. We want to see wonderful things happen there. And I know when you're not getting the support you need, Ms. Yenney will let us know, so I'm not worried about not knowing. But just to let you know that you have some board members that are really concerned and we really want to see some great things and have the students just get what they deserve.
I just don't want to say anything.
Just to reiterate that, we must accelerate progress at Hartford Public Schools. And I know that in speaking to Mr. Brooks, that is something that we talked about, you know, around the data, right? Data speaks of a story, but they are also pieces that we really can't see when you look at the quantitative data, right? There is a lot of, there's a richness at Hartford Public High School around partnerships. There's a richness around students wanting to be engaged and find relevance in their learning. And know that we are committed to not only supporting you as a leader, but just making sure that we provide the support for our students to really own, right, their space and own their learning. And so to that, you know, there's a level of, an added level of commitment because, you know, turnaround leadership is a specific type of leadership, right? And that means that it requires having, you know, courageous conversations and really establishing structures and processes for adults to learn from and one another, and that requires building trust, right? So that our students can begin to see what is happening among the adults and then want to engage in that very same practice. And so while I acknowledge that there is work that must be done and improvements that must happen immediately, I also acknowledge the fact that there are structures there already that we can begin to immediately tap into and lots of supports and partnerships as well.
Okay. Well, Mr. Brooks, I have a question, and I'll take just a minute for an exchange, thirty seconds equally. So I guess my question, we heard about the academic side and your administrative skills. What I would like to know is how you plan to engage an adolescent who is full of his or her own emotions and operated with countless amount of negativity and misguided, misguided leadership, I guess, outside of school. All the things that are prevalent inside of school. We have issues where we have students that are coming in from state facilities that have been closed. We have issues with children that are going to have high concentration of needs in your school. How do you suggest that you're going to encourage not just the love of learning but scholarship in those conditions?
So I'll start by saying that at one point in my life, I might have been described as a student like that. And what made the difference in my life is people that wouldn't let me, wouldn't let me fail. And I was fortunate enough to have those people throughout my years and throughout communities I've lived in. And that's really shaped what I want to be for students and why I want to be in Hartford in particular. There's a connection here that I have that reminds me of communities that I grew up in where it's easy for me to relate to some of the things that students here might be going through. For me, everything within the school is about relationships. And not only am I going to have to build the relationships and the supports and understand all those things that are necessary to connect services and people and care and love to students, I'm going to have to know all those things. But I'm also going to have to invest in everyone who, within our school, doesn't have that capacity at the moment, right? And I've got to have high expectations for everyone. Our teachers, all of our staff, high expectations of our students. So that in the same way that I had role models that just, I'm telling you, just would not quit, like you're going to college no matter what you say or do, right? Or you'll be prepared for career no matter what you say or do. I've got to develop that mindset. I've got to develop those equitable practices. I've got to develop those expectations. And that starts with me really understanding who I have in front of me in our building and determining how best they can be a support network for all of our students, namely those students who, like me, need a little more.
Okay. I asked a question, you don't have to answer. You put the pen on it because we have to move on. But you said education in the school community is about relationships. And my perspective, education is about your relationship with yourself and uncovering, discovering who you are through the rigorous process of education. So, and this is a rhetorical question for now, but what is your opinion between college and career readiness versus the hoodie? And you can pause it, you don't have to answer right now, but we want to get back to that later. Okay? So the recommended action of the superintendent is, is there a motion for approval of the superintendent recommendation to appoint Anthony Brooks to the position of Principal of Hartford Public High School effective September 15th, 2018? Is there a motion? It's been moved and seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And?
Are we supposed to do it in there?
Oh, okay.
We're voting on.
All right. So I guess at some point you'll find the votes up there on the confirmation votes on the screen. So again, we're still working through our process, but the motion seems to have carried. Motion passed. Congratulations, Mr. Brooks. If you want to say a few words, by all means.
Sure.
Oh, there it is.
Oh, okay.
Good evening, Madam Superintendent, the members of the board. I want to thank you and the members of our Hartford Public High School community for the opportunity to lead our proud school. Coming back to Hartford is a return to a community that brings fond memories of those communities I grew up in as a child. Hartford's also where I began my career as an administrator and where I'd still be if the circumstances had not forced me to go elsewhere. While kids everywhere need strong and caring leadership, the kind that I've provided in my appointments since leaving Hartford, doing the work here, transforming schools here, building relationships here, and being a part of student success here is a thrill I can't put into words. The best thing I can say is that I benefited from principals and teachers who expected the world of me in spite of my circumstances. And it is my life's work to repay that kindness here with students who are growing up like I do. Joining Hartford High as a principal marks new growth for me both professionally and personally, but the arc of my career and my experiences has primed me to spearhead the change we need at Hartford High. Do I have enough time? Am I all right with time?
I'm sorry, I went to Weaver, so my face is kind of...
God. I want to be fair to the process. I do want to be fair to the process. The foundations of school turnaround, a clear vision, a strategic plan for change, systems that create one strong, positive climate and culture among all three academies, ongoing communication and collaboration with family and community partners, high expectations for academic rigor and social interactions in all classrooms, and cyclical processes of data collection and progress monitoring that inform all of our decision-making. These foundations are universal to all grade levels from kindergarten to 12th grade. And this is part of the mindset that I bring to the front doors of the school. I also bring the belief that every student that sits in our classrooms deserves an equal opportunity to choose between college or career upon graduation from Hartford Public High School. As such, it is our moral imperative and the social justice calling of our time to empower our students with the knowledge, skills, and beliefs they'll need to make that choice and change their world. I'm a visionary, but I'm not a fool. I'm well aware of the challenges we face, chronic attendance, suspension, discipline, academic performance rates that jump off the page and demand an urgent response. And it's natural to wonder why I would leave a school that I've got running like a fine watch to come back to Hartford. And to that, I'd say three things. One, where some might look at the data and see dire challenges, I see tremendous opportunities for growth. Two, our challenges are where the work is, and I'm committed to that work for the sake of our kids. Three, I love to beat the odds. At the district level, we have division and structures for collaboration and support. And throughout the Hartford High community, we have the pride in the people to effect the change. So it is with great pride and yet humility that I would accept the appointment of Principal of Hartford Public High School. The responsibility to build a model for excellence at our school is one that I will pour my heart and soul into, and I will commit my time, my energy, and my talents to ensuring that our vision is realized. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, business agenda, 4.2, contract continuation approval. Can you turn that down just a little bit, please? The Center for Children with Special Needs, thank you, Madam Superintendent.
As part of the Office of the Child Advocate Action Plan, a contract was executed with the Center for Children with Special Needs to initially conduct an assessment of our special education programs and services for students with significant neurodevelopmental disorders and complex learning needs. As a result of that initial assessment, a proposal was sent forth to begin systemic improvements through intensive consultation and direct support to staff. And I want to step back because, as you may or may not remember, the findings in the Office of the Child Advocate report that initially we responded to were around making sure that we were compliant, right? There was a lot of compliance work that had to be done. This is what we call the technical pieces of the work, making sure that people are trained, making sure that people understand, making sure that people know how to make the reports of around suspected child abuse and neglect. All of those things we had to really tend to really fast. But if you recall, the conversations around the other level of work, which is called the adaptive work, that means changing practices and ultimately beliefs around what it is that we have to do on behalf of our most vulnerable students, all of our students, but specifically around our special education students. And so that is in the spirit and in the commitment in which we entered this work. And because as a district, we have a commitment to the entire learning continuum, we wanted to make sure that we addressed the needs through capacity building of the staff, our teachers, the paraeducators, and even in working with our parents so that we can have a systemic approach to making sure that our students' needs are met. So I just wanted to provide that additional context. And I know that Dr. Sellers is here along with, I believe, two of our partners from the Center with Children with Special Needs. And I also see that Mickey Kramer is here from the Office of the Child Advocate. So just wanted to provide an overview, Chairman Stallings.
Thank you. Is there any questions or comments from the board? Any questions, comments? Okay. Here and then, I guess I'll ask a couple. One, in general, I know the superintendent just explained what the program is, but if you could explain to us how, what a parent, from a parent perspective, how would a parent with a student with special needs, how would they benefit from this? What should they expect? So from the start, please.
Thank you all. Sasan?
Hi.
Okay. Thank you all for giving us the opportunity to speak tonight. Your question around parent involvement is probably one of the most central to the work that we do. One of the probably most exciting parts of our collaboration has been that from the first moments of our time together, the families and students themselves have been right at the center of the planning. So families should be experiencing through this work a very active and importantly transparent process where they feel like they know the things we're trying to teach to their child, where they feel like their voice about the future for their child has been brought into perspective and incorporated into the educational program. And for our high school and 18 to 21 students, where the students themselves are advocating and speaking in conjunction with their families toward their vision and toward what they want to see in their achievement as they move forward. This program has, if nothing else, opened doors for family collaboration, for transparent conversations about what is a challenge, how do we overcome that challenge, what is student vision for becoming independent? And that collaboration is something that we hope the families feel is always available, where multiple times a year, at both the elementary and at the 18 to 21 program level, the STEP program, the families have come together in large groups to share in open-ended forums and discussions about what their visions are and what they see as the needs. And for many of the families also, where on a month-to-month basis, they're now meeting with the educators and other professionals who work with their child. So you get a chance to talk right about your own kid and the things that are most important to you, but you also come to larger group discussions about the benefit to the community and the needs of that community. So a wonderful way to open the conversation because that family engagement and collaboration has probably been among the most exceptional and exciting changes in areas of growth. And where we've been able to look and say, for example, with the STEP program at Hartford Public High School, where our families who we met now over a year ago at your central office building, and they said, "He needs to leave the building. He needs to be able to transition through the community safely. She needs a job. She needs purpose." And to now be able to look and say after the first year with that program, the continuum of those students have learning that's occurring outside of those STEP classrooms themselves. Their classroom is now the job sites where they're holding employment and the local stores and community transportation environments where they're learning to be independent. It's what led the program to kind of pick up that name, I goal, independence is our goal. And so that parent engagement, but importantly also student vision. And for everyone who shares their home or who works with individuals with disabilities, you know, one of the most precious things to you is that the person's vision, him or herself, is incorporated, that you don't assume that you know what that person wants, but rather that you bring them into the conversation. And in particular for the adults that we work with, that has been probably one of the most celebrated parts of the program's growth this year.
All right. Just one last question, just to flip the script just a little bit, big belief in duality. So what is our effort to educate the greater community, mainstream students, on how to support these students?
That's a great question. One of the goals of the program, as Mark said, that we have, we're using the name I goal because the goal is independence. And part of that goal is having students be able to develop the independence to be able to go out into more inclusive settings. So looking at the continuum as fluid, this program in particular for students who currently need more intensive, small group and one-to-one instruction in order to... need more intensive, small group and one-to-one instruction in order to generalize skills, but the goal is always that they will be able to generalize those skills in the general education environment. So I want to make sure I understand your question. You're asking what the broader population of the school community, what's their role in supporting these students?
Correct.
Well, like I said, that's a great question, and there is tremendous potential, especially at, this program is going to be expanding into Buckley. It's also currently located at Hartford Public High School. You know, I don't want to get too far ahead of ourselves because we have a very rigorous, you know, our district model of excellence, we have a rigorous strategic plan. But part of our planning in the future is to build capacity in our young people, in peers who do not have disabilities, for supporting students in inclusive settings. There are models around the country, and they have different names, but they're basically a peer inclusion team. And there are high schools around the country, I happen to come from a district, who had a model program for that. And it was a peer inclusion team located on high school campuses where general education students could actually sort of apply to be a part of this team. They had a teacher assigned to the program. They learned IDEA law, they learned disability etiquette, they learned universal design for learning principles, and they actually served as instructional support and tutors for individuals with more mild to moderate disabilities and also severe and profound disabilities as they started to transition to those, you know, they gained independence and started to transition to those general education settings to participate. So that is something, like I said, I don't want to get too far ahead of the game, but that's definitely in our forecast.
Right. No, and forgive me, I don't mean for you to...
Sure.
It was sort of a general question, meaning, and it's unfortunate, and I'm not trying to, oh, actually, the new principal is still here. That's kind of, it was kind of a kind of question for the principal and you guys collectively. And I mean that to say, and before a student could apply and say, "Listen, I want to help and support a special needs student," they had to be educated about what special needs students are, how to support them, and in general. And I just meant in that small way, I guess, for the school community, how does the school community support the student when you see them at the bathroom or in the cafeteria? Could students say, "Hey, and how you doing?" You know, that kind of, you know, just incorporating them in the school community and being a part of, I don't, you know, I don't know what Hartford High does for their school community, but, for example, if they were at Weaver, just being a part of, just being a part of the box, just, you know, just being a part of who we are. That's what I meant.
Right. And that's part of what the program is about, is making inclusion kind of extraordinarily ordinary, right?
That, thank you.
What's been really exciting, the program has the Hartford Public High School component right now, as well as the Naylor component, which includes preschool. And one of the things we believe is that if, from their first moments of education, all students experience an inclusive model, that you come up then, over the years, always sharing your learning environments with students where a question of diversity includes the ways in which you communicate, and the ways in which your body moves, and the ways in which you learn. And so this year, for our youngest students, the Naylor teams, we've seen substantial increases in time spent in inclusion for our preschoolers, where they were able to partner more actively with one of the other preschool sites, for our kindergarteners and first graders, where at each level, and this includes the secondary levels, the principals met with special education administration and our team to plan for how to further inclusion. So nice times where you see administration of special ed and general ed working together. And we believe with an investment of time, meaning these preschoolers, next year, they're our kindergarteners, and those second graders and third graders, every year that they spend seeing students with disabilities in their classroom, not just being helped, but being successful, being really valuable, able members of their classroom, it will become just normal to have students of all different ability types in your learning space. And that's been one of the other exciting missions. And I think you see it most heavily at those young little ones, because in kindergarten, you have so much learning in front of you, and if the first thing you know is that this student who happens to communicate not with his voice, but with technology, because his voice doesn't help him out as much as his fingers might, that's just normal for you now. And when that's your first grade experience, it just moves on. And so a lot of it is just exposure. And oftentimes, training our adults to hand off a little bit and let the kids be their own teachers. We want to help so much, we do a lot of coaching for all the support staff of, "Let the little ones help each other, because you will watch them be the world's best teachers in so many regards, especially socially for our kids."
Well, thank you for that, and I appreciate your enthusiasm, I truly do. If there's any other questions, Mr. Hernandez?
One quick question, two, actually. We did see this in teaching and learning, I think, at one point. We had a presentation, I think, from...
Yes, yeah. Yeah, the group here is presenting.
Yeah, okay. And I feel like that was like a year ago at this point, in summer. But no, I remember because I went through the presentation. Just a quick question for you, is the recommendation to go to nine total classrooms, right? So four at Naylor, two at Victory, which I think is at Buckley, and then three at STEP, which is at Hartford, right?
Correct.
So that's the recommendation?
Yes, allowing us to grow at Naylor, because we need to, the students are getting older.
Four days a week.
Yep. And to grow at STEP. Importantly, both of them still receiving the same amount of consultative support that they were this past year, which is a huge celebration. What that means is, with the same amount of technical consultation, because your teachers have learned so much and gained so many skills, we're able to support a larger number of learners. Then the question of, can we, to the point of the superintendent, reach all students and incorporate that Victory team so that across the age span, you're doing high-quality work? That is really the new site, whereas the other two have grown in their span. And we hope that growth would continue so that ultimately, you have a continuum from preschool through graduation of high-quality, inclusive practices that build independence.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So I'm just going to read a brief description. The Children, Center for Children for Special Needs will provide service to expand the capacity of the current special education services to address comprehensively the empathetically-supported interventions, the needs of students of all ages with neurological developmental disorders and other complex learnings. The strategic priority alignment for the board is the board outcome is systematically improved, the programming, excuse me, the programming for students with neurological developmental disorders and complex learning needs. This aligns with the tenets of the Teaching and Learning Equity, Operational Effectiveness, and Accountability stance of the board. Is there a motion for, excuse me, there's a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute the contract with this Center for Children with Special Needs for a term delineated in the contract on June 30th, 2019, at a cost not to exceed $726,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Does there move there, second?
Second.
The move in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, you're going to have to adjust to the technology.
I know, now I know. I'm looking like, oh my goodness, all right. There we are. All right, so I'll just do it again. Nope, we're not. So all in favor? Vote aye, all opposed, vote nay? Give me a minute. Hurry up, wait, hurry up, wait, hurry up, wait. No, I'll get a flow, I'll get a flow, I'll get a flow by the next one. I'll get a flow. But I didn't hear any nays, so the motion carries as far as I'm concerned. Oh, it's finally there, all right, motion carries.
Thank you, Board, Superintendent.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. 4.3, we are, I'm still trying to use my paper, I guess I will concede to the computer. What I'll do from here is I am just going to let you get into the executive summary, and I'll do the strategic priority and the alignment, and that's easier. All right, so, ERS, it seems like it was just yesterday. Yeah, I know. Madam Superintendent, whenever you're ready.
Yes. So in January 2018, there was a unanimous vote for the district model of excellence, a plan that reconfigured the school portfolio and dramatically changed the resource environment in which our schools operate. Under the DME, neighborhood schools will be reorganized, and in order to create clear pathways, K-12, pre-K-12, creating more opportunities for, one, teacher collaboration and conditions for rigorous instruction, which will ultimately get at equitable practices and access for our students. The DME also included relocation, co-location of several schools and programs, increasing facility usage. We continue to ensure that each school is set up for success, and we have to, of course, continue to create system-level structures and processes that allow us to sustain the work and accelerate district-wide improvement. And so for the next phase of the ERS work, the focus would mostly be on supporting us on creating the systems and the processes and the conditions that have to exist in which leaders can actualize their vision for operational effectiveness. And a lot of the work is going to be focused around our, you think, it's small, okay. Do they have a, I don't know that I saw it posted.
Can we put it in board docs now?
Okay, thank you. So there's a lot of work that has, the bulk of the work will happen around the school planning and budgeting, around school planning and budgeting support. As we know, when we think about operational effectiveness, budgeting is at the core of that work. And so an effective school planning and budget process allows us to, one, make the decisions around our people, our time, and our money, in a way that is connected to the priorities that we have outlined. And so until we get this piece of the work right, we will continue to struggle to promote our efficiencies, our effectiveness, and ultimately, our ability to sustain ourselves fiscally. Last year, we took some important first steps towards ensuring that there was coherence around the school planning and budget process, but we know that there's opportunity for growth there. We know that our teams at the central office level were very intentional around their cross-departmental work around, you know, the resources that our school needed. There was improvement around the collaboration with the schools, but still, right, there still is some vagueness and even confusion around what that process is. And so there are two areas of work that we have to focus on, right? What we call the challenges, that lack of clarity and intentionality around the budgeting process. And, you know, just wanted to share a piece of data when we, a year ago, when we first engaged ERS around the assessment, an initial assessment, and there were specific questions posed to our principals, just only 54% of our principals reported that they understood how the dollars were being allocated to their schools. And so we keep that at the forefront of our mind as we engage in this process. And we have not yet developed a coherent system of support to help school leaders make those very strategic and aligned decisions. So, posted, not posted.
Board member slash IT.
And the public can check as well?
It is posted, fellow board members and superintendent, you have to refresh the browser, but it is posted.
Oh.
And now, I will turn it over back to Chairman Stallings, but I know that, no, no, maybe to David.
I didn't refresh my browser.
Oh, not yet, okay. However...
Oh, okay.
Here is a copy. Does everyone, did everyone refresh their browser? If not, I have... You're not seeing it.
Can you click back to 4.? To the right.
All right, so I'm just going to old-school.
Below the summary. So what this graphic is, and I know that David will unpack it for us, but really is to show when the bulk of the work will take place. This is a very aggressive timeline. We thought we had an aggressive timeline before when we were engaging in the development of the DME, but this is a little more aggressive. And so I'll leave it at that for now.
Okay. Alexa, you should have helped us with this. Never mind. Anyway, I'm just teasing. Thank you, Juan, for getting us back to the meeting, all right? Are there any questions or comments? I would say questions first, Ms. Oliver.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for your work last year and supporting our work as we developed a DME. I would like to understand a couple of things. One is, we talk about the budget development for this year. I've been somewhat outspoken as one of the board members to say, "I look forward to an improved and enhanced process for this year coming up." So help me reconcile this slide with that timeline.
Yep.
Because what I'm seeing is work that's going throughout the year to help at the school level, it appears, but help me understand as a system, how are we going to do a better job this year with our budget development process?
So let me start by, first of all, thanking you for the opportunity to be a partner with Hartford Public Schools and hopefully continue to. And secondly, clarify a little bit of what this is. So the way to look at the artifact in front of you is sort of a model of what an ideal annual planning and budgeting process would look like. So less a vision of how we would work with the district and more of where does a healthy district go in this process? And so this has a few elements. One is, it should be clear to everyone involved what the process looks like, and there's a clear sequence in terms of identifying needs within schools, aligning that to the district's vision, goals, and priorities, and moving through a process around staffing, budgeting, doing things like building your schedule, which in turn affects how you staff and how you structure the school, all the way through to actually making all the changes you're going to make for the following year and going through it. So the challenge we have for this year is to say, well, how do we implement, design and implement something like this that is Hartfordized, basically, as quickly as possible? The goal would be to say, in a district typically, that process begins as soon as October. So our focus is starting here in August to document current practice, to identify the ways in which this process can be developed in a way that makes sense for Hartford, based on when you get certain data about state revenue, when do you know about enrollment for the next year, when do you know about, when are you able to sort of launch the hiring process and do those things? And to design something that this group and the leadership team within HPS could actually operationalize starting as soon as this fall. So we've deliberately in the work plan, front-loaded the work so that that is possible. So we are not envisioning, well, the contract technically goes through June, we have front-loaded the work so that you are launching a new budget and planning process this fall, and we are riding along with you through the implementation of that into the winter.
So some of the work, you know, is very specific, like it's calling out certain schools, right? Will this work that you do this year, will it create, whether it's the framework, the playbook, a tool, whatever you want to call it, that would assist other schools moving forward? Like, how do we translate that work? So it's not that we need to do this for every single school, but that we're actually building system-wide capacity.
Yeah. And so I can clarify, Ms. Oliver, when you talk about specific schools, you mean when we talk about Rossin and MLK and the schools that are relaunching for this year? Got it, okay. So this was a real tension that actually we felt in the planning process with the superintendent and her team, and we've made, and I think the team and the superintendent made some hard decisions about where to focus efforts. So on one hand, and I'll come to your question in a minute, on one hand, we started our work together last year and saying, well, with the district model for excellence, what is HPS's vision for what schools should be like, how schools should work for kids? And then we did, we provided some actual design support with Dr. Veale and others for Rossin and MLK. for Rossin and MLK for this year. The natural extension of that work, and as we do this work in many districts, it's, you know, continue to provide that type of deep support for schools that are being redesigned, and also we call progress monitoring for support, support for schools that have recently been redesigned. At the same time, there's a need for the systems work, right, to actually build the planning process to answer this question of, well, principals saying, "Why do I get what I get?", which is a distraction from the work you have to do, which is figure out what to do with what you get. And so we said, well, we actually can't do both of those things within the support that the district is able to bring to bear from generous philanthropy in order to do this. So we all looked at that and said, well, this district is going to work really hard and really fast to stand on its own feet and sort of build and use the capacity in certain aspects of what's already been done. So the advisory support line, which is a smaller line item within the budget, is our way of saying, rather than standing alongside the academics team in the redesign of schools for next year in line with the DME and the progress monitoring in Rossin and MLK, we're essentially going to lift them up, and they're going to be in the lead with any sort of tools and advisory support and guidance that we can provide. But that's going to continue to happen, and that's going to be HPS-led. What that does is it frees us up to exclusively, pretty much, look at the system-level questions of, every school goes through a planning process, every school's got to get their budget, every school leader's got to figure out what to do with that. It's just you've got two schools that relaunch this year, five more that are going next year, and then a few dozen more that are not in that process and still need to benefit from the broader system move towards operational effectiveness.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Oh, no, no. Oh, wait a minute. My question was sort of for clarification, I guess. So if I'm understanding, then you're talking about doing a revised budgeting process that would be a district-wide budgeting...
Correct.
...formula, so to speak, or, I mean, I know there's, we've...
To both, both of those things.
I was at the finance committee meeting when you did present this to us. I guess it was last year when we were going through the DME process. You know, we talked about student-based budgeting versus, I don't know, what's the other...
Traditional budgeting.
Sort of, I don't know what we're doing now, which isn't exactly that kind of, is that need-based budgeting, whatever. So that's something that we can expect to have clarity on at the end of this process, that you're, for this budget season going forward, so schools will have a very clear formula that is based on some theory that we will decide upon.
Correct. And so there's, so first of all, I would say, based on what we've experienced over the last year and a half, you're not alone in not being clear on how things have worked historically or in the last few years, or why that worked in the evolution of student-based budgeting in this district. And so that's the goal here. And it's both things that you described, Ms. Glanville. One is the process by which planning and budgeting happens. So what is the role that I play as an academics leader, as a principal, as an HR team at every step in the process, which needs to be clear so people know where they're supposed to be when. Otherwise, it's a little bit of a, in any system, it's going to be a little bit of a, a little bit of entropy happening. So what is the process we're going to operationalize? And then secondly, to your point, how do we decide how much money goes to which schools? And is that going to come in the form of dollars or positions or some combination? So historically, this district 10 or 12 years ago moved to a weighted student funding or student-based budgeting model where there was a formula, schools got dollars, and then it was a principal's responsibility, basically, to figure out what to do with those dollars. And over time, as the district has evolved, that has sort of eroded a little bit from everything that we've heard, and isn't necessarily in line with what's right for this district and the theory of action the superintendent and her team and you have put forward right now. We still want to be very need-oriented in how resources are distributed to schools, but not necessarily a world where it's dollars and principals make all calls on their own. And so the superintendent and deputy superintendent and their team have already started to outline in working sessions, or what are the, what is the philosophy, what are the rules of the road for that? And our job for the next several months is to say, let's build a clear process that embodies that, and let's help our CFO take the lead in defining a, basically, a formula by which resources go out to schools. And you can imagine all kinds of things that come with that, right? It's possible that some things that have typically gone out as dollars may become staff allocation. Some things that we thought were dollars and were actually staff allocations, we're going to codify in a clear way. And then you're going to start managing things like, well, how much transition are we going to allow in a school, right? If my school has been very overfunded relative to student need or very underfunded relative to student need, are we going to have big shifts or small shifts? And so all of those questions come into this, to this work. And again, the goal is that when a principal sits down to do a final budget checkout or whatever the approach is going to be this spring, they will have experienced a process by which they know and their district partners know exactly what decisions are being made when, who is responsible for those decisions, and when they see their budget, it's going to be very clear to them why they got what they got, which changes the conversation completely from a debate over, you know, what I should get and how much and all of that, to the real conversation, which should be, how am I going to use what I have to do the best I can for my kids? And we need to create the maximum space for that. Having a clear process and clear formulas is what helps do that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Oliver.
Yes, so, and that's where, the way you just did that response. So will this work also support the role of the SGCs in this process?
Yes, so to the extent that the SGCs have a role, which they do, in the school planning and budgeting process, that is to be clearly delineated, right?
Okay.
So one way to think about every step in the process is not just what's happening, but who's the responsible actor, who has input, who is a decider if there's a decision to be made? And so clarity around that would include the role of an SGC.
Okay. One more question. Mentioned the long-term financial plan. There are some of us who think this is critically important, and this work goes hand in hand. So can you speak a little bit about that portion? I know it comes off as a smaller piece, the way it's set up here, but just, you know, is it going to be just in general, like, you know, how much detail could we expect, et cetera? Or is it about creating the platform on which the, you know, staff develops that? If you could just speak a little to that, that'd be great.
Yep. So this is another one of those tensions, and so where do we pick our spot? Where do we prioritize? And so similar to what I was describing about the school design work that Chief Avila and Chief Negron will lead, your CFO, Mr. Fleeck, will lead the work around developing a long-term financial plan. And so our job here is to provide access to tools, advisory support, help set up the structure by which he is empowered to do that. If it makes sense, and if the support exists for us to play a stronger role in that, that's something we'd be more than happy to do, the prioritization belief here is that we can accomplish a good bit in supporting your internal team and setting up for that. And what we really need to do is ensure that this budget process goes super smoothly with a lot of clarity on what's what. So I think there's room for us to do more of that, and our goal in the near term is at least to provide access to everything that we know and the experience that we've had to help, to help Mr. Fleeck lead that work.
So is it fair to say, it's similar to your earlier statement when you talked about walking side by side, is it more like technical support than to the CFO and his team in that process?
Yeah, and to sort of beat the analogy to death, instead of either doing the work for or with him or walking side by side, we're sort of walking behind and feeding him information and knowledge and answering questions and providing access to tools and other data and examples that might, that might help that process. You're standing on the shoulders of work that's come before, but there's no, there's, we've not prioritized within this scope, formal, technical support of going and building that formula or facilitating the conversations around it. That's going to happen internally as it's imagined right now.
So I have a follow-up question, but it might be more so to the superintendent. So is there, as of yet, and it might be too early to answer this, is there a timeline when we can expect an actual, you know, financial plan for the district?
For fiscal sustainability?
Yes.
Yeah, so I would need to work along ERS to find out what the process would look like. That is the concern that I have, quite frankly, around, you know, being supported, you know, in the background, given that we don't have the capacity now. And so I would much rather have a gradual release, which entails the technical assistance followed by the release. And so I would, I would need to work with David around, you know, what are the models? But even with that, even with having a target delivery date, if you will, I wonder about the capacity that has to be built in order to get at, to get, to get to that point. Ms. Oliver.
Okay. So maybe for more discussion...
Absolutely.
...our committee meeting. I do have one more question. I don't know who it goes to. We talked a little bit in a meeting about community engagement work, and I think in the slide is your example of how things should work. I want to say, I don't know, they seem, yeah, engage the school community, yes, it was on there. So, so do you foresee as part of the process with the budgeting tools and some of the things you spoke about earlier, you guys leading community engagement, or is this a critical piece? You're going to be partnering with central staff or school staff? Could you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, I think, so our goal would be to build a process that HPS owns and runs. And so at the point in the process where we say, engage the school community, our job here would be able to, would be to say, in partnership with district and school leaders, what does that mean? When does that happen? Who should be in charge of it? What are the questions you're trying to answer? I think in year one of this rollout, there's some work that we would like to do to sort of, to be, not to lead that process at all, but to sort of ensure that, as you test it, be part of that testing and say, hey, how is this actually working? Like, is our community engagement plan outlined? Did we give it enough time? Are people empowered with the right tools they need to do that? But that would largely be as an observer and support for adjusting plan, my hypothesis, and I don't think this is radical, is ultimately the community engagement around what the school's priorities and budget are is going to happen at the school level with school leadership and support from district. And that's how I would expect it to go.
Thank you.
Would you like to...
I do, I want to add that there is engagement that we want to do at the local level around what the expectation is and the vision around the process. We hear many different feedback points from our community around transparency or the lack thereof. And so when I ask questions around, well, what does that look like? I get very different answers. And so that's some of the engagement that I want our team to do from the get-go at the beginning, right? Which, if you remember, it mirrors some of the process that we engaged in around the District Model of Excellence, right? That what, what do you think? What do you believe this process should be like? And so that's work that has to happen at the front end, and that's work that we and my team will be engaging in.
Any other questions besides mine? Okay, I'll try to make it small. So if, I understand what you're saying in general, but what I was listening for were the discussions around weights and how we're going to develop weights for special needs students versus other issues that we might have. And then how we support extracurricular activities in varsity sports. So those are the other things. And so I guess, yes, our CFO has to develop a budget formula, but how are we addressing those issues and collecting data to sort of formulate our thinking around that? Or is that something that you're going to help us achieve?
It is. Yeah, it is. So it is the, the second of the two big work streams here is that we called the resource allocation model, but it's basically what you described eloquently and specifically. So we would be working with Mr. Fleeck and starting as soon as next week, hopefully, convening a design team within the district, including school leaders and district leaders, to start making those decisions, both to look at, what do we know about how resource allocation happens today, but also to say, hey, whether we're doing a true student-based budgeting or weighted student funding model or not, there's some decisions about need that we're making decisions about. Which needs do we want to focus on, and how do we want to prioritize the way resources get allocated? And so that is, that is the second large work stream here that we would be basically facilitating within the district, so that when it comes time to get your budget, 100% of principals hopefully will be able to say, I understand why I got what I got. I may not like it, but I understand why. And that reduces the noise in the system immensely.
So I guess the last question, flipping that. How do we account or create a mechanism of fundraising? Not the traditional, the district goes out, they apply for a grant, or a school applies for a grant, but straight-up community, we want to just raise money and put it into this particular program, athletics, booster club, drama club, or just in general, we just want tutoring for our school and/or the district. Is that, is that a, is that a realistic prospect?
So it's, I'm glad you asked this question, just talking with your new head of policy and strategy and engagement before the meeting here today, and these are exactly the kinds of questions that I think are central right now in, in the district and that need to be addressed. It's a hard one. So the work that we will take on alongside district leadership specifically within the scope is how do you use and allocate the resources that you know you are getting or that you expect to get from federal, state, and local funds? There's a separate question about how do you best leverage community partners, and I know it's been high on the superintendent's agenda in our conversations, just about what are the ways to think about that most strategically? It's a hard nut to crack. It's a thing that, the transparency around where those dollars are in most systems is something you have to work hard to create. And obviously, to the extent that dollars are being raised, you know, within individual school communities, you have to manage the thinking about, well, how do we solve for equity in that context? That technically happens, is not envisioned as a main focus of this resource allocation work. It would be on the sort of the main sources of funds, and it's something crucial that I think we're hearing lots more districts try to be more thoughtful about and would love to be supportive of any of the efforts you're able to take on there.
Well, just in general, if I wanted to, if we wanted to, through our advocacy, say to the delegation, this is actually how much money we need to fully realize the educational picture that we all want and discuss and advocate for, this is how much money we need. That's kind of what I'm trying to get at. So it's one thing to have the state, federal, local allocation, then you have your grants. And so I'm just trying to figure that out, but that's, maybe that's a question for David, not, not you, so.
Well, no, it's a question that we have helped some district leaders try to answer in saying, you know, so there's two, there's two different sides of the coin, ha-ha, so to speak, right? One is the, how well do you, how do you use what you get? And that's where our focus is here, where most of our focus has been so far. And the question I hear you ask, Ms. Stallings, is, well, how much should we get, or how much do we want or do we need? And that's as much a, there's clearly a fiscal calculation about that based on what the DME calls for and what your vision of schools is, and it's frankly also a political calculation of, do you, how do you invest in that based on what you think is, you know, who's your audience and how you're trying to ask that question? Our focus for this year within this scope of work is transparency within the current structures and the current dollars that you have allocating across schools. If we get there, within this scope of work, that's a win. I think the question you're asking is a huge one, and one that is, you know, if it's a thing to take on, not just in the context of, and one way to think about it is actually in the context of the fiscal sustainability work, in saying, you know, how do we stay fiscally sustainable? One is how do we keep our heads above water, and the second is, well, but what if, is what I hear you asking. We had X, Y, and Z to do more, and that would be the venue to take it on.
Somewhat, like, for example, our CBS therapy contract is hot, and it's, and it's increasing, and because the, the need is increasing. And so if we are looking at weights and need-based, then we're going to put a larger weight on, on that particular category. Naturally, that's going to take away from something else.
Right.
And so, but it's not solely our responsibility to meet the need, I guess. So, so I guess from that standpoint, that's why I was asking the question, but you answered it.
Yeah, and that is something we would take into account, absolutely. You know, it's squeezing the balloon, right? You can't just take, add money somewhere else and then not deal with the consequences of it. And so there would certainly be some creativity and strategy involved in saying, actually, is this a thing we do need to allocate for, or do you have other sources that you could go get? And that would, you know, with some scenario analysis to be done there.
Right, okay. All right, so I won't spend any more, more time. Madam Superintendent?
David, I know that the timeline is, right, compressed. And so, and, you know, we talk often around about additional funding streams, and while I continue actively, right, trying to seek additional funding for the fiscal sustainability work, I don't know what the capacity is on your end, given that we have, you know, specific deadlines. given that we have, you know, specific deadlines this fall and early winter around the budget process. So just curious, and you don't have to answer now, I guess, if you don't have an answer, but just curious around your, or ERS's capacity to take on, right, additional work.
And, and are you talking about that in the fall and winter? Are you talking about it starting February?
So initially, we, we thought, right, if the funding were available, that we would begin after we launched the budget process. But it's been a while since we talked about that, so I don't know where you stand.
So there are still some moving parts for us, I believe. And I'd want to go back and confirm that we have the bandwidth or could free up the bandwidth to move quickly on that front this fall. I know that we would, that we'd be able to do that work if we were to start it sort of in four or five months.
Sure.
For sure. And then it's really a question of back timing from what you want and what you need and by when. But I wouldn't, I mean, if the, if the, if the philanthropic capacity or the dollars exist for us to be able to just staff a larger team to try to broaden the scope of work, it's something I think we could figure out together for sure.
Thanks.
Okay, so hopefully that's something that we can discuss later. So we'll stick a pin in that. Is there any other questions on this particular item?
I just have one less thing, just more, it's more maybe of a comment.
No, no. Ms. Oliver?
So, you know, and I asked a question about, as you say, one of the things you talked about is what is the role in clarifying that and having transparency around that? And then also, we talked about when it's appropriate to walk side by side versus behind and all that. You know, what I think, and I think it's fair to say as a board, we take our responsibility in terms of passing the budget pretty seriously. And I'm hopeful that there is a role with the board somewhere along this process. So whereas, you know, I want to be really clear, like I've said, I look forward to there being this enhanced process, which I definitely do. But I also recognize what we can't allow is for something dangerous to come to us without us having the support as board members to be able to go through and fully understand the budget so that we can do what is, you know, we need to do at our level. So I don't know if that's already planned for or if that can be thought through or if that's at a committee level or whatever that is. But I just wanted to make that comment because I welcome that as a board member. You know, we talk about what are our three things? And this is one of our, our three, and it's a big one. So, you know, again, appreciate the support and the help thus far. And it's just like, and I look forward to us having this awesome process. So, thank you.
Thank you. Just to answer that, yes, we're going to be aboard Finance Committee as a whole, and we will be all in this process. Because again, at the end of the day, we had to vote on it. So, Mr. Flores, did you have any? Anyone else? Madam Superintendent?
Just wanted to further add that, you know, when we engage in a DME process, there was specifically engagement with the board around the visioning, right? One of the initial visionings that happened, right, were, was with two, two sessions with our community. And then we had, you know, visioning opportunities for the board. And so in my conversations with, with ERS, that was one of the expectations also that, you know, from the get-go, there's an opportunity for the board to have interaction around the what in order to inform our how moving forward.
Okay, all right. So moving on, I'm going to read the alignment. This contract aligns with the two district priorities, operational effectiveness as we work on creating systems, processes, and conditions for sustained system-wide change, and teaching and learning as we learn, excuse me, as we work on system design plans, including school themes and equitable budgets. There's a motion, motion to authorize the superintendent to execute. Wrong motion, I'm about to read Harvard performs. I'm in the wrong place, y'all. Okay, there's a motion to authorize the superintendent to execute a contract with educational resource strategies, ERS for the term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2019, at a cost not to exceed $330,000. There's, is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved, they are second?
Second.
It's been moved and second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Signified by saying aye, all opposed? Signified by saying nay or vote? Yeah, when it comes up, I know. This is so funny. Well, I was like these little old people. That is funny. Okay, so here are no, here are no abstentions or nays that eyes, eyes have, the motion carries? All right, so I'm going to quickly move on to 4.4, which is the continuation, contract continuation approval of Harvard performs. Okay, Madam Superintendent?
Okay, this is our friends, Harvard performs. Sorry, I had to kind of check in. I saw Tracy and then I saw Ree. For our work to infuse and bring arts programming into professional development for staff and then obviously to have our, our children access the programming. It, you know, when we think about how this comes alive in the classrooms, we know that there is significant integration with the, the lessons to our standards. And it is not only a direct benefit to our students, but also to our, to our instructional staff. Local teaching artists come into the classroom and, and bring classroom material to life for the students to not only dra, through drama, music, visual arts, and, and/or dance. And then students use the art form as their vehicle for learning about the actual content. Some of the program also exposes our students to area museums and theaters for professional productions. And in this way, there's a deeper understanding by the student and the teacher around new ways to deliver the lesson and really engage our students.
Is there any questions? Madam Oliver, Ms. Oliver?
So one of the things that I've heard about is that you guys have this great catalog that the teaching staff gets to pick from. And what I'm obviously very aware of, which all of us are aware of, is where we need help in terms of our teaching and learning around literacy, especially third grade, and obviously graduation rate overall. Could you speak a little to or give examples of some of the activities that can be chosen as part of that to support those strategic priorities?
Sure. So first of all, good evening, Superintendent and board members. So just to focus first on professional learning so that we ensure that with Harvard performs, the teaching artists are working directly with our classroom teachers to help them to further infuse integrate, arts integration strategies into their classrooms every single day. So that after the teaching artist leaves, that strategy doesn't just go away. So they're getting hands-on, real-life strategies with the students in the classrooms, with the teaching artist alongside the teacher, and then further coaching with that teacher and the teaching artist so that they're able to integrate more of those strategies. And I'll let Ree actually speak to a couple of maybe the literacy programs that the students are able to choose from.
Sure, so one of the, some of them are very simple. But when you bring drama, for instance, into the classroom or puppetry into the classroom, it enlivens the lesson. So one of the examples of a way that the teachers extended the learning is we have a puppet program for kindergarteners. And the teach, the teaching artists showed the kids how to break up their syllables and their words by using the puppet's mouth. And then the kids got to speak their names, speak sentences by breaking up the sentences and their, and the syllables, and learning about what a syllable is, you know, when you're in kindergarten. So there's some, some very simple things like that. There's also a lot of writing programs, writing for sports, for instance, which might be more interesting to kids, writing who am I poems about animals, learning about animal habitats. There are poems that are, excuse me, there are programs that use rap, have the kids create rap poetry and, and perform raps in order to get them writing like that. So there are a lot, we have lots and lots of literacy programs, as well as math programs and science and social studies to kind of bring those lessons to life in a way that is interactive and enjoyable.
Any other questions? Ms. Glanville?
It's a comment more, and it ties back to something that you were asking, David, from ERS, which is just that, you know, I think that this is a very good model that we have that with our contribution and then the amount that Harvard performs raises to be able to like double that investment in arts and maximize that. And I just, I, I'm making a comment that I would like us to really look at that sort of a strategy for other areas when we're talking about our budget and the shortcomings and the issues that you were raising, Mr. Stallings, around like, could some similar model, you know, work for sports? For some of the other areas that we need to invest in? So I just, it was just a comment really to that effect.
Okay, any other? Ms. Brody?
I have a little one that, well, when I was in the school system, I got a chance to experience some of those artists coming in. But I have a little one who, I don't know if the school loved this particular artist, but I think he came back a couple times. And it wasn't me asking her, what did you do at school today? It was her coming home telling me what she learned and songs she learned and what it meant, and just sharing that with me. So as a parent, I appreciate the partnership Harvard Public Schools have for Harvard performs.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I was just gonna add, I was just gonna say the, pretty much the same thing. I think at a time where we see, including us, right, let me hold us accountable as well. But at a time where we're seeing the arts being cut across the country, right? And for many, many reasons, I appreciate that we're, that we're as a board willing to invest in this and to even consider the fact that you're, you're hoping or expecting to almost 800 programs for the 2018, 2019 academic year. So that's amazing. I'm supportive and I, and I think I could speak for the board that sometimes we can, we obviously feel bad sometimes that we can't make it to some of these just because, you know, a lot of the time they're happening during the work, the, the workday. But it's, it's, I support it. I think it's a good idea. I think it's, it's a good program. And obviously, it's been, just based off of the data that I saw in the evaluation, people enjoy it. And at the end of the day, that's what matters, so, yeah.
Any other comments, questions, except for my own? All right, so save mine for last. I agree. However, I'm going to push a little, just a little. I realize you're in K through eight, and, and I think that's excellent. But we definitely need to figure out something like this on a high school level for our young adults. Because that's actually what got me interested in school, is being engaged this way on a high school level. And another thing, I spoke maybe five years now about how the ways that I learned to write persuasively so forth and so on is by decoding hip-hop lyrics. So it's not simply just me writing, creating my own manuscript, but it's learning how to evaluate and, and sort of analyze someone else's for content. And, and sort of learn how to synthesize information that way. And so if ultimately, what I'm trying to suggest and say is, there is a large contingent of young people who may not look like students, but are true scholars. And they don't have the opportunity to show their scholarship is because they are creative beings and they're not necessarily structured to sit down in an academic setting and sort of regurgitate or write an essay, but can learn and have the potential to do it. They just do it and recognize it differently. And I'll just use this one example. We all, we're talking about budget sustainability and we're talking about finance. And when I was coming up, we called it cream. So you would hear, my friends and I have a conversation about cream and you'd be like, what are you talking about? And the acronym cash rules everything around me. So we had the perspective, but it was our own perspective. And I think sometimes what misses, what we're missing is integrating the child's subculture into the culture, the academic culture that we're trying to create and vice versa. So I would hope and ask if we could sort of think about some programming and work together to talk about other programming for, for students. And then I'm going to ask you, I'm going to put a pin on the hoodie question we use also. And so we can get back to that. But if there's no other comment, questions or comments, then I'll just, there's a motion for the superintendent to exec, to execute a contract for Harvard performs to term delineate contract ending June 30th, 2019, at a cost not to exceed $314,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved, they are second?
Second.
It's been moved and second, all in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, signified by saying nay. I have a pop-up, so I can't vote. All right. And I'm just going to be quick. I had no nays, so the ayes have it, and I need a vote.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Where are we next? We are at?
4.5.
4.5? It was here, right? All right, okay. Hobson?
Yes. Slash, Naviance.
Yes, okay. So, and I'm, nope, there you go. Move my agenda, I'm so old school, so I'm looking at paper. All right, so item number 4.5, Hobbs, Naviance, Inc., Madam Superintendent?
Yes, student success plans, which were mandated by the State Department of Education for all students in grade six through 12. We have increased as a result of the use of Naviance as a primary tool. Students, some parents and staff utilize the SSPs to set goals and monitor progress on academic and behavioral growth, as well as explore and plan for post-secondary career planning and pathways. The tool is critical in our students' process around the college application and internship opportunities. As a result of usage of the Naviance as that primary student success planning tool, students have used it around resume building. And then the parent usage and college application rates have also increased. I know that Sonia Denal is here to kind of talk about some of the details. But I also want to reference that, you know, the usage of Naviance also looks different throughout our schools, given that even before this was mandated, schools that could afford it, quite frankly, purchased and took off with it. And so we have schools at very different places on the continuum.
Okay. Before I even open up the questions, I'm going to say I thoroughly went home and asked my, both my students about this, this thing. And my youngest, again, like, I don't know what you're talking about. But my middle son actually had to confess that he did build a resume on it. Now, he couldn't speak about anything beyond that. And then he was afraid that he was going to get somebody in trouble, so he stopped talking. But, so I just wanted to publicly acknowledge. We were in a meeting and I'm like, I, I still never heard of it. And, you know, my wife didn't realize there was a, a parent tool because we'd have been in the Kool-Aid. So I think that's important, that parents should know that they can access this. And that would help. But beyond that, I will just open this up to my colleagues. Is there any questions about, even the student? Come on. I need you, Alexa, I need you to jump in here.
Well, for Naviance, we don't really use it that much. Not really, we maybe use it twice in a year. And usually, it's like a requirement where in advisory, everyone is expected to fill out something with their Naviance, whether their counselor like requires you to fill it out like a resume or looking at colleges, deciding your personality, that type. And a lot of kids don't seem interested in it. There's no like interaction where like, they're like getting something right away from it. They don't feel like they're learning as much and not a lot of them take it seriously. as much and not a lot of them take it seriously. So that's the only thing.
That's pretty much what I heard. So, any other comments, questions? So I guess, I guess our, we have to collectively drum up more support and enthusiasm about that collectively. That's not necessarily the, the program's fault. So, Madam Superintendent?
Just wanted to add before, oh, someone has a question. No.
Not a, not a question. I just wanted to say something positive. I don't know if my daughter's school is a school that had it prior to, because it seemed like it was the thing to do. I know she pressed some kind of button because all of a sudden, every college is saying, joint, come visit and we're gonna be in your area. So I knew something happened because she must have put, or some kind of way determined her career choice based on some questions, because the colleges would say, oh, you're interested in medicine or you're interested in this. So they saw something and was, and it's like pursuing her, or at least trying to get her to know what their college is about. And one thing that I learned, because this, and I had a previous conversation with the superintendent and Ms. Denal about that, I'm, I'm hoping that parent, it, the school did have a parent session, but it was during the work day, like at 9:00 AM and you had to go leave work and come back. So I was hoping that it would be something that maybe in the evening, because it was informational and it was for us to understand what our young people would experience. It wasn't more so on the parent side. So that was, that was informative, but I want to know my role in supporting in that. And then they're able to apply for colleges, for letters of recommendations to be uploaded on it. And I think able to apply for is a Common App connected to it, all this stuff. So that was explained, but the parent, we didn't, we weren't given any meat to say, okay, I can do that. It was a parent, it's like, this is what your student is gonna be doing and just so you know what it is. So it, I think it has a lot of potential. I'm just hoping that we'll tap into it as a district and that students will feel it's important and.
That was well said. Madam Superintendent?
Just to add the historical context, and Ms. Denal can expand on it. You know, looking at the Naviance and the SSP implementation process in three, from three different lenses. The lens of first, those that came online first, being the ones that, you know, had it in, in their budget to invest in this several years ago. Two years ago, there was the other cohort around the funding through the NELI May and the Centers of Innovation work around student-centered learning. And so there was funding that was leveraged there to implement. And then last year, this past year, full district-wide introduction to it. And so there's still a lot of learning to be, to be done. The other piece that I want to reference is around the parent connection. And while we have to find a way to not only expose the parents to what it is that the tool provides for the student, but also the parent, you know, as, as Ms. Brody referenced, the parents, what's in it for the parent, finding a way to make it less cumbersome, given that we also are working to get parents to use Power School, right? And so we're now looking at potentially two different, we are looking, not potentially, we are, looking at two different sites, two different logins. And, you know, it's something that we're struggling as, even as a central office team. We have all of these portals. And so how do we kind of have these systems communicate so that we can have one master login and access to the information? Not that there's an answer now, but it's some things that we have to think through.
So if I may just contribute to the conversation, so thank you for an opportunity to speak to this contract. It's been near and dear to my heart for several years since I've entered the district. We've been working on this slow and steady climb up this mountain that we call student success plans. So I've been working with Millie Arseneaga with Parent University. And she and I collaborate often. I was just with the parents on Saturday, gone, and we were working on their facilitator skills. And one of the sessions that she continues to offer is that of student success plans. So within parent, Hartford Parent University, if parents are engaged in that work, they are receiving the information concerning student success plans. We also worked at Buckley High School. And of course, this is new to the district, so it has to become part of the culture and climate, this increase in parent engagement in all levels, not just student success plans, but academic excellence and, and, you know, and social emotional supports, et cetera, et cetera. So not just unique to student success plans, but throughout the entire district, raising student, parent and family engagement to the next level. So we worked with Buckley. We did conduct a training session. And parents were struggling a little bit with the technology. So anything that's new, case in point this evening, is there's a learning curve. Parents are going to take time. Those of us who use technology on a daily basis, we still need to adjust to using a new platform or things of that nature. So with this being brand-new district-wide implementation, we roll it out in phases. And so we wanted to ensure that students and staff receive training and developed communities of practice. And we are intending on phasing out to parents in a very strategic way to ensure that we don't overwhelm the system or the teachers with an onslaught of new initiatives or an onslaught of change, which would just overwhelm our capacity to really do something with fidelity. So parent engagement most definitely is at the top of our list and is part of our phased approach to ensuring that we have a systematic and systemic way of ensuring that our students are fully engaged in their education and infusing this in the culture and climate of the district.
Ms. Glanville?
I know that the student success plans, it's six, starts at sixth grade. So, and given that we have the district model of excellence now with the middle school model coming online, and we're gonna have the four middle schools, one of them starting now for the school year, is there any like specific adaptation of Naviance and how it's going to be implemented around that, that specific middle school model and, and with the student success plans? Or has that been something that's been thought through as far as like where, where we're headed with the district model?
So that's an excellent point. Our one true middle school, Mel's, currently has two school counselors, because the principal saw the need to ensure that students were not just developing academically and growing academically, but their personal social development was also a very, much a concern for her. So she was able to get grant funds to actually have the staff to make sure that the students were using these tools on a regular, consistent basis. So ensuring that the staffing structures are there and the resources are there. And when we add those two together, then we can get the student outcomes and the results that we need, as long as we include the professional learning and the capacity building of our school-based staff.
Any other questions? Ms. Flores?
My concern is, it's not really about the program, but I, I do have concerns about implementation. Is, I know my, my son graduated from a school that was a nearly implementer. He graduated last year. But as a parent, I never heard of the program. And I said, I, I've got one in school now and I don't know what's going on in that school. And I'm, I'm concerned because I hear our student representative talk about how in, in her school, the students don't think that this is anything that's very important. So I, I appreciate Ms. Brody's comments and I agree with her about the, the potential. But I'm really concerned, and it's not just about this program, I, there's a lot of programs that we bring in and we don't do a very good job of implementing. And, and that is a serious concern for me.
Ms. Allen?
Mine was similar. Just asked, but I, I was just wondering if we could speak to, I mean, obviously, buy-in at the leadership level is really important. And you spoke about capacity and, and change and managing change. And so as you hear like, you know, Mr. Flores, what he says in terms of that implementation piece, what are things that systemically as a district we're doing? Because obviously, it is state mandated, so there's a level of compliance that's required. So maybe you could speak a little bit to that, like the difference between just compliance and maybe some supports coming from your office?
Absolutely. So, thank you. We have made a move in the district, or I shouldn't say we, you all have seen the need to ensure that we level the playing field. So in the past, it was student-based budgeting. Some schools could afford it, some schools could not afford it. For the schools that could not afford it, the district made a decision to ensure that all students could afford it. Some schools had a schedule in order to allow for the delivery of the student success plans and utilization of the Naviance tool. This year, it's been mandated that all ninth through 12th grade schools have an advisory. So we're, we just vetted the process for one of our neighborhood schools around the advisory block and the Naviance tool is front and center. Along with that has to come the additional professional learning for new staff members. So along with the rollout of any initiative, we also have to remember that we do lose those staff members who have been trained. And so retraining the entire staff is going to take some time, but it definitely is a priority. We also ensured that sixth through eighth grade students begin having staff members who are dedicated to not just their academic development, but their personal, social and their career development. So yes, it is definitely a concern. The implementation takes time. Change management most definitely takes time. But the good news is, now that it is sixth through 12th grade, we can continue this systemic support. We've set up electronic modules for staff members to log on to at any time. They can watch videos, they can look at different tools to ensure that they are abreast of the best strategies to embed or to teach Naviance.
Madam Superintendent?
Just wanted to also reference that this is why it's so important for us as a district to be intentional around programs, because we have to think about all these other contextual factors. Sonia, you're referencing the fact that we did go to an advisory model across all of our high schools, but that is not only, right, just around the SSPs and Naviance use. We have to think about all the other pieces that the entire school, for example, at Hartford High, will, will be moving and shifting and having another move in their schedule in order to facilitate this advisory period. And so in addition to the Naviance tool, there are these other pieces that have to be accounted for. In addition to, you know, what's the lesson plan for the advisory group? How do we build capacity in staff to support our students around the work? And so while I know that the conversation is around a tool, there are all these other pieces that have to support the implementation of a tool. And it's directly connected as well to the culture and the climate of the building, right? Because now we're saying, we're investing in an advisory group, which means that we have to think about all the other dynamics that are at play when a school of 1,100 students moves at the same time for a 30-minute advisory group. And so it's, it's certainly complex. And so it's easy to lose sight of the tool when you have to think about, from a leadership perspective, of all these other dynamics. So lots for us to, to, to think about and look through.
Absolutely.
Different lenses.
Thank you.
So, let me just say this, because it's not that, it's not that complicated. It really isn't. I get the implementation part of it in a larger organization. But simply put, it's a good tool. It's worth an investment if we're talking about a student's future, building a, a path to college or a career path and giving them options and exposing other things. It's a good tool. So no one here is, is saying that. And implementation, we've been struggling with that for a while. And so we're gonna continue to struggle till we get that right. Parent engagement and community engagement, I think what we're trying to focus on, at least what I was trying to convey, was this is the kind of things that parents and community are asking for. These are the things that we want to use to help our young people explore their options or, or simply just have a conversation about the future. So again, when I said, when I talked about my son, it created a conversation between the two of us about what he may want to do for a future, what he's thinking about. And I was able to, you know, oh, you put some thought into it. Not a lot of serious thought, because then it was back to basketball. But the point is, at least it, it agitated some thought and began, you know, so he has one eye looking towards the future, even though, you know, again, it has everything to do with basketball. But that's what, from a community standpoint, from a parent's standpoint, that's what we're trying to get at. I think the middle school is a wonderful start. It's a, it's a new beginning to, to actually talk about the whole thing, not just what we're doing in school, but what we're doing outside of school. Most of us have been inspired outside of school. You know, I, I want to be a social worker why, because I saw this, or I went through this. I want to be a police officer because I saw this, I went through this. And not very few, you know, very few was, maybe Leslie, you know, was inspired in school to like, I want to be a teacher and educator. I was not. But, but the, the point is, we just need to figure out a way together to inform parents and to generate excitement about this tool and, and make sure that we use the tool, because no tool, if, if you're not using the tool, it's no good anyway. Regardless of whether you had it, you can have a nice shiny brand new tool, but if we're not using it, i.e. radio station, if we're not using it, then, you know, what good is the tool? So I think that's pretty much what we're trying to figure out and get to. And so again, I appreciate the explanations and things of the nature. I apologize if I put you in defense, because that was not the intention whatsoever. It was simply just to, to, to have a realistic look at our investment. So we're making an investment. Are, are schools truly promoting it, advertising it and pushing it as a, a resource tool, not just for students, but for parents? And so if there's no more questions? Oh, Alexa?
I think Naviance can work only if there's more of like a community balance. Like you were explaining how you were talking to the parents and it took you a long time for some of the parents to understand how to use the internet and how to work the online thing. But when you're in school, and we were in our advisory class and we were sitting with the computers, and they said, log on to your Naviance, some kids were a little confused about, oh, I don't know my password. And when they would tell their advisor, their advisor didn't know because they're not really trained on the Naviance program. And at my school, it was more focused based on the counselors. And we only have two counselors. And you're talking about a whole high school, and they're trying to focus more on the seniors graduating. If they're focusing on that, they're not focusing as much as on the ninth graders or the 10th graders. And that means they're kind of lost in that process, kind of like the parents when you're training them, because they're only exposed to it maybe once a year. And if you're only exposed to it once a year, you're gonna forget how that program works. And that's kind of like how it worked with me and some of the other students. So there needs to be a coherent like training process where both the teachers, the students and the administration, as long as with the parents, have that community built and understanding of how Naviance works. And once you know that, and you know that there's an outcome in explaining it to the students that you're doing this to help you learn what you want, learn how to build a resume, so that when you apply for a job, when you're in high school and you know you have to provide, you can have that resume available and you don't have to scramble around looking online, how do I create a resume? I think that's more beneficial than just handing it to them and saying, fill this out. Because when you just say that, that's how students kind of pull away from. Because when you just say that, that's how students kind of pull away from it, because they don't know what they're doing and why are they doing it, because there's no outcome.
Future president, y'all. No, thank you so much. Couldn't have said it better myself, I was trying to say that. So the teaching and learning, student co-created academic career and personal, social goals with a caring adult. Students use data to monitor, monitor progress on their own success and growth. Students also utilize Naviance, I'm tongue-tied now, to create resumes, explore career paths, and apply college and, apply to colleges and universities. I am really tongue-tied. The family and community engagement, we just noticed that we can improve on, we all knows that, so we'll, we'll work together to do that. But parents and families have received training, HPU, onto how to successfully utilize the tool to support their student growth successfully in high school, excuse me, successful completion of high school. Parent usage rates, parent utilization rates has increased. I don't know why I'm tongue-tied, but I'm going to stop talking. Their motion for the superintendent to execute a contract of Hobson-Navis for Nevis, for, yeah, for the term delineated in the contract ending June 30th, 2019, at a cost not to exceed $86,600, $601.
So moved.
They moved their second.
Second.
They've moved in second, all in favor, signified by saying aye and/or vote. But Ms. Santiago puts it up.
Aye.
Aye.
And all of an opposed, signified by saying nay. I'll vote when it comes up. And I have no ayes or extensions, so the nays have it, the motion carries. So we're going to move on to what most of us have been waiting on. Item 4.6, school construction plans and the EDO 42 submittal, Weaver, Phase Four Fieldhouse And I am going to turn this over to Madam Superintendent and Dr. Colon, Jose Colon-Rivas.
The DAS, the Department of Administrative Services, the Office of School Construction Grants requires that the School Building Committee and Board of Education certify that they have approved the final construction documents for school construction projects prior to the Office of School Construction Grants review of those plans. So once the plans are reviewed and approved by the Office of School Construction Grants, the projects are allowed to go out to bid. And so all this time, the Hartford School Building Committee, working through Arcadis, ONG, CNR, Program Management, has reviewed and approved construction packets, packages for the activities listed below here, which you see as the Weaver High School and Phase Four, which will advance to the construction project being performed at Weaver. And so I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Colon-Rivas. I know that we're trying to set up the presentation.
Well, before you start that, just want to go on record now. I thought the chair of the Building Committee would be here. So I just want to publicly, we were offered a tour of the construction site. We were. And so I just want to, I volunteered the whole board, but I just wanted to officially let you know, and if you want to respond and say you want to take the tour, then you can. If you don't, then by all means, let me know. But I just want to publicly say that the full board is interested in taking the tour, plus some administrative, administrators from Central Office as well, including Ms. Santiago, if she wants to come, since she does a lot of work.
I have a point, but it's just, I wanted to address Mr. Downs' comment about, there's a, an error in the, the opening date. It, it says 2018-19 school year, but it should say 2019-2020.
Yeah.
Okay.
I was going to correct that as well, so thank you. Can you get it done by 2018-2019? That's what I needed to correct, because there's no way we're going to get it done by 2018.
No, the DME is, right, everything is interconnected. Even if we could get that done beforehand, no.
It's a ripple effect. It will get done in 2019. Good evening, Superintendent, board members, student representative. We're actually thrilled to present to you the information that we have discussed through different committees. The Weaver Construction Series Committee reviewed plans, such as, we had a presentation during school choice. It was a committee of the whole, so some of the board members had the opportunity to listen to the presentation and ask questions. Also, the information was brought to the School Building Committee, in which all of the information was totally approved by unanimous votes. And then tonight, we bring it to you as a Board of Education. From here, we go into the Office of School Construction Grants.
Advisory Committee.
An advisory committee, yes. So we have Ken Mohart, Principal from SLAM, and Sal Salafia from Arcadis, they're joining me tonight. Mr. Mohart has a short presentation. This is the same presentation that was provided at the Choice and Facilities Committee, and we will let him do the quick presentation and then we'll open it for questions. Okay?
I'll read the mic. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Kent Mohart. I'm a principal with the SLAM Collaborative. I'm here tonight representing a team of the SLAM Collaborative and Aminta Emma that have been working on the Weaver project for quite a few years now. So we're thrilled to be presenting to you the final phase of, well, not quite final, FFNE will be the final phase, but the final main construction and renovation phase for the building, being Phase Three and Four, that is the Fieldhouse Wing and the North Fields. I'm going to dive right in. The first image here is a, and I apologize about the aspect ratio, it's a little bit squished from the sides, but first image here is a image of the west facade of the Fieldhouse Wing. And you'll notice that we're carrying the same material palette from Phase Two, the Academic Wing and Auditorium Wing, around to the Fieldhouse Wing, so we have a very contiguous aesthetic as we go around the building. One thing I wanted to point out is that we are developing two distinct entrance points, one for the Doc Hurley Fieldhouse and one down the way a little bit, which I have a enlarged view of in the next slide, for the Aquatic Center, which will be for the pool. And one of the design criteria we were trying to further with the development of this design was to simplify this facade. If anybody that's familiar with it today, they'll know that there are three of these existing roof structures, what we, I kind of termed portals at the doors, and some of them are at the exit doors as well, from the gymnasium. And it's a little confusing as to know, to know which one of those to go to for the entrance to the building, because they all look the same. So what we tried to do is clean that up a bit and create two distinct entry points on this long facade. And downplay the exit doors from the gymnasium, have them blend into the main wall. And so that's, that was one of the main design approaches for this. We have provided ADA accessibility to all the entrances from this side of the building with sloped walks up to the entrance levels. Going down a little bit further to the Aquatic Center, the north side, again, you can see a similar approach taken to the, the main Doc Hurley Fieldhouse entrance, where we have a new vestibule that's light and airy and has a, you know, a signage for the Aquatic Center, so it's very clear as to where to enter the building. Stepping into the baseball field and looking back down that same facade, again, you can see the Aquatic Center and the main Doc Hurley Fieldhouse entrance down far, from the far end. Another thing to note on this, in this view are clear story windows, so daylighting into the gymnasium, which you don't have today. We are working hard to get daylight into that large space, so you don't have to necessarily have the lights on at all times, just to walk around through the space. You'll have some daylight coming in. And on the far end, that may be enough to conduct PE classes. As we continue around the corner, this is a view from standing in the soccer field, and we're looking at the east side of the Fieldhouse Wing. This is the auditorium, the pool space. As you can see, as we come around the corner, the grade falls off down to the lower field level, and the, the full two-story volume of the pool space emerges. And we also have rectified ADA accessibility from that level as well, down to the lower field. And off the page here, there's another ramp that comes back up to the upper portion of the site on the west side. Also, some of the highlighted features are, we've got a new elevator that's going to provide ADA accessibility to the balcony within the pool area, as well as the main lower main level of the Fieldhouse, and it actually goes down to the basement into the pool service area, the pool equipment zone. And then we've also carried that dark brick design element into the two bumpouts that comprise the health classrooms on the lowest level. On the site, the, the area that's shaded in, in white here is, this is all Phase Two scoped, so this is all currently under construction, and the Phase Three and Four is traced out by this outline, where we will be developing the west parking lot, renovating the baseball field, softball field, soccer field, and tennis courts, as well as the Fieldhouse Just a little bit more of a blow-up here, the fields on the north side of the site will be all natural turf fields with irrigation, and then the tennis courts will be a replacement of the existing tennis courts as our base bid condition. I do have, we have some alternates in the bid packages that I'll talk about in a minute to help manage the budget, and we'll talk about what that means shortly. Also, on the west side parking lot, we've developed, as I mentioned, ADA accessibility. We also have a fairly lengthy bus drop-off area to, to facilitate student athletes coming on buses, visiting athletes. And all of the turning radii and so forth to support buses and trucks coming into the loading dock have been accounted for. As I mentioned, we have some alternates in the package to help manage the budget, and I have a few slides toward the end that talks a little bit about where we are with the budget. But as, as most of you are aware, we've been struggling a little bit with the budget on this project as we've gone through. And in order to give you, the owners, options at bid day, when we receive bids, we've developed some fairly large alternates to help manage how the money is spent. Decisions on those will be deferred to, to the owner and, and you guys as we come closer to that point. But those alternates include the North Fields, so we have what we call deduct alternates, where they're in the base bid, but you have the option to remove it from the, from the scope of work, to save money if you need to. So those alternates include not renovating the, the baseball field, not renovating the softball field and soccer field, and restoring the soccer field to where it would be, where you'd need to have it to, from where it is right now under construction. And then repairing the tennis courts in their, not completely replacing them, as we have in base bid. And then we also have a couple of large alternates on the interior, one being the pool, the interior pool room renovations, and then the interior pool locker rooms. I'm not intended to be able to see what the details of these plans, but we do have, just wanted to point out that this is a two-story wing, so we have a lower level where we have all the locker rooms, fitness room, and pool locker rooms, and the pool itself. And then on the second floor is the main gym and the second-story volume of the pool, and this is the roof plan. So we're going to take a little bit closer look at the first floor plan. Again, not intending to go through in detail, but the, the main athletic and PE locker rooms are in this block, which is the block that's closest to the area we call the knuckle, which is kind of the, the corner between the academic wing and the Fieldhouse Wing. And the boys' and girls' locker rooms are mirror images of each other, so they have equal facilities to address Title IX. And then we have support facilities in the form of trainers' room and storage and laundry facilities in between. Another thing to point out is currently you have one single corridor that runs the length of the building north-south. That's how it was in its current form. What we've done to improve circulation, as well as improve security and oversight throughout the, this lower level, is to provide a loop circulation around the full lower floor with one cross corridor in front of the fitness center. So this match line here kind of represents where you match this plan up to above. So we then have a fitness center, and then the, the pool locker rooms, and the pool This is a view looking, I'm going to go back to the plan real quick. Standing right about here, looking at this corner where you have an entrance into the boys' locker room and a coach's meeting room on the corner. So just a view to see the, the planned aesthetic for the, for the building, and also the entrance into the locker room, but also to note that there is a supervisory role on the corner of the, of the corridor to maintain good supervision of that corridor system. And then turning a little bit to the right and looking down that long corridor, north-south corridor, you get a flavor of that. You have the exit stair here, and then this, this colored flooring area represents the niche to go into the health classroom. That's right there. Looking a little bit closer at the, the pool locker rooms, one, one thing I want to note is that we do have, we worked with the district to develop this concept for individual changing spaces for students that want, may want a little bit additional privacy. So we have these three individual changing rooms that can be used for students in PE or athletics, and we also have one that's set up that has a direct access onto the pool deck to, to facilitate students that may want to use that facility that are going to use the pool. And so those are all part of that, that lower level. A few images of the, the planned renovations for the pool area. We will be reusing the existing pool deck tile. One thing that we will be doing to the, to the pool is to modify the slope. Currently, the slope from the shallow end to the deep end is, exceeds the maximum slope per current code, so we need to modify that, and we'll end up making the pool a little bit shallower to correct that. The weight and fitness room is, is a large space in the center of the floor plan between the pool locker rooms above and the, the girls' locker rooms on the, on the lower portion. And again, it has a loop corridor around the whole, the whole space. It's organized with cardio exercise equipment around the perimeter in the form of bikes, ellipticals, and treadmills, and then universal weight training equipment in the center and free weights around these corners. We're going to look at a view standing from this point here, looking at the entrance. You can see we've got incorporated quite a bit of glazing into there to create a transparent feel through that space, so it's on display, and that also reinforces supervision throughout that corridor system. And then getting into that space, you can see it's a, it's a fairly good-sized space, and the, the design is to have one structural bay here, that's about 800 square feet. That would be a, a multipurpose type space for yoga classes or other types of movement classes, and then the weight training equipment and universal equipment on the far end. It's about a two-third, one-third split in that space. And there are also curtains that can be drawn to get a little bit more separation between those two activities. On the second floor is primarily the gym, and the entire gym floor will be removed, the existing gym floor will be removed and abated, because it did have some hazardous materials in it, so that will be all cleaned up. And we will install a new synthetic sports flooring system, state-of-the-art sports flooring, that will support all court sports. It has a fair amount of cush to it. It's, it's sanctioned by the International Volleyball and Basketball Federations for, for that play. And this is a diagram of, of the practice track. We also will, we are going to essentially duplicate the practice track that you have there today to allow for that, that activity to take place inside. It is not a, a full 200-meter track, it just wouldn't fit in this, in this building, but it will be good for practice. We will have a competition basketball court, and within that, it's hard to see in this view, but within that, there's a competition, did I say basketball court, and then a competition volleyball court in the center. There are five PE practice basketball courts transverse, and all of them have the overhead backboard supports. And, and then in each... And then in each, excuse me, and then there are six other volleyball courts, one, two, three, four, five, six, one of which is the competition in the center. The brown bars here represent bleacher banks, two of which will be mounted to the outside walls and then this one in the center serves a similar function as to the one that's there today as a space divider, but also they are portable bleachers so they could be relocated and mounted either temporarily or permanently along the walls there and there to allow you to have the full size of the gym for special events. And there's a view, a rendition of the gym with fully deployed bleachers, this being the center space divider bank. And then you can get a sense of the daylighting of the high windows on the far north end of the gym in this view. So as I mentioned, we'll talk a little bit about budget. When we first started out on the Phase Three and Four design, we had a budget of $26,100,000. And as we've gone through the design, we've been refining and value engineering the building to meet the budget as best we can. We just finished, we're not, actually, we're not quite finished bidding Phase Three, but Phase Three, which is the abatement and demolition for that fieldhouse wing, has come in at around $5 million in aggregate. We're hoping to bring that number down a little bit by rebidding a few packages in the next week or two. And then the Phase Four component is currently at $27,360,000 for a total of $32,358. So we do have a bit of a budget situation with about $6.2 million over our target. Part of that, we expected this, to be honest with you. We knew this was going to happen because when we started out, we knew that we didn't really have what we needed to meet the budget, but that's part of why we developed these large alternates to help manage things. And so we have about $4.2 million worth of what I've termed recommended, and I'll explain what that means in a minute, recommended deduct alternates. And so if we take that off, you know, we still have a $2.0 million issue, but we feel that we will be able to, we're hopeful that we'll be able to bridge that in the end and I'll show you how. So I know I promised when I presented to the choice committee to show the full list of alternates, so I included that in this package. And this is their, these are the individual values for each of those alternates and the one in red is the one that both the CM and the design team are not recommending. And so without getting into the details of why, I just, that's, that one has been left out of the calculation to arrive at that $4.2 million value. But as I mentioned, we have softball fields and scoreboards, the tennis courts, the pool room renovation and the pool locker rooms are the two largest ones and we'll have to be making some decisions as we move forward together. So the top portion of this slide is a recap of the slide from two slides ago, just summarizing where we are with the budget and how we are hopeful that we can utilize project contingencies that are currently tied up in contracts that need to be there to accommodate unforeseen issues that arise as construction moves forward. But our hope and our plan is to take as much of those contingency dollars that are left over and be able to buy, our goal is to buy all of that so we really can get everything that we're trying to put into this project. And that concludes the presentation. I just, I'll end on schedule. We are here in our schedule toward the third week of August, here tonight to request approval for the construction documents so we can move on to the state next week and get approval to bid. The quicker we can get the documents onto the street and collect bids, the better we're going to know how we are faring with our budget and hedge against further escalation in the marketplace. And then we anticipate receiving bids in September, October timeframe and getting awards out by the end of the, end of October and early, commencing construction in early November. And currently, the tentative date for completion of the fieldhouse wing is the end of the year, next year, 2019. So there will be a period of time where the students will be in the building, they will be in the academic portion of the building by August 2019 while construction continues and is completed in the fieldhouse.
Okay, is there any questions or comment?
Can you, either you, Kemp, or maybe Dr. Kowry, speak to that 18-month window that we discussed in the facilities and choice meeting to complete, when something is bid and alternate and with that, and if there's contingency monies left over that we would...
I misspoke when I talked about the 18 months. 18 months is what we had put on the alternates for Phase Two. Obviously, this portion of the construction will not run 18 months so that the 18 months isn't really necessary. We're looking at probably a nine-month or maybe a 10-month period for the contractors to hold these alternate prices so that we can add them back into the project as we progress and know how many of the contingency dollars will be available to purchase those deduct alternates back, assuming we have to take them.
So to clarify, there's like, there'll be two junctures that we may or may not have to take the alternates depending on how things come back and then once, if we do take an alternate, there may be another opportunity based on contingency funds that are not spent to purchase them back, but there's a time window on that. Is that the way we understand it?
Okay. Any other questions?
I'm confused from when we discuss alternates before, then it was like, oh, all alternates, they're all in and now they're all out. I'm missing a whole lot. And I don't, if we could go back to the contingent, the page that had the contingencies...
All of those items that are, that we refer to as contingencies are in the base bids. So right now, when bids come in, they will include completing all of those items that we keep referring to as alternates. They're designed to be taken out of contracts if the bids come in higher than what we can substantiate in contract initially. So you follow this, this is different, in Phase Two, we had, we had add alternates where we had some things that we had contractors bid that we wanted to purchase if the bids came in low enough and there were dollars able to do that. This is kind of the inverse approach where we've got everything bid and we will deduct them from contracts if initially there's not enough money to buy them out. But we will have 10 months, nine or 10 months, to add them back into the contracts as the contingency dollars become available. Does that make any more sense?
Not really.
All of those things that we're referring to as alternates are going to be bid as part of the base contracts when we put Phase Four out to bid. But we are asking contractors to identify certain portions of that scope of work so that if the bids come in higher than what we can afford to purchase initially, we can pull those, basically pull those out of their bid. The dollar value has already been identified. So we can go ahead with the other portions of the work and add those back into their contracts as contingency dollars become available for expenditure.
Can you clarify for all of us how it is, I think this is part of your question, different from what, when we first saw these plans and alternates were described to us? Is it that that was the way alternates were done in Phase Two where they were just never even bid on or they were bid on separately as add-ons versus now we've adjusted to make them subtractions?
None of these, none of these options, none of these alternates were a part of Phase Two. We had portions of development in Phase Two that was identified as alternates, but they were add alternates. The athletic field, for example, the main football field, that was not really originally a part of the base bids for Phase Two. That was an alternate. What other alternates? We had a number of alternates associated with Phase Two.
Yeah, the screens and some other things.
Yeah.
They were relatively minor, the field was...
Um...
The fieldhouse was actually, the field, I mean...
Not the fieldhouse was not part of it.
So, so for example, you're saying that the...
Athletic field.
I think what I'm thinking is, when you, when you showed, when we, when we first looked at these plans, because this is the second time the board has had a presentation on the fieldhouse and the fields plans and it was presented, when we, I think it was when we first approved them, I don't know, now we're approving them again, but it was, or maybe it was a workshop where we had, just had a presentation on them and we didn't vote on them, but it was described to us as alternates then and there was a lot of trepidation, a lot of questions around the board and you are saying that this is different, these alternates are different than how alternates could be done as the way they were first presented to us. Can you explain how it's different?
Yes, I think I can add some clarity to it. So you're referring back to February when we made a presentation when you were approving the ed specs, the revised ed specs for the project. We made a presentation and at that time, we mentioned that, at that time, we had the documents structured that certain things would be add alternates. And what that means is it's like buying a car and you want to buy the nicer wheels, that it's an added cost. That's how the documents were structured. And if you do that, that way, certain things are not in your base bid. So for, and we, at the time, we had it structured that the pool renovations and the fields were not in the base bid and they would be add-ons. The way we have, and that was received negatively both by this board as well as the state. So we worked with the state to come up with a better way, a different way to structure it, to include all of the scope in the base bid and have deducts. And there's really only two ways to do it, but you're still, you're identifying a discrete scope of work that can either be added or removed from your bids. But in either case, the contractors are identifying a price for that discrete scope of work. And then you, as the owner, have the option to either buy it if it's an add alt or remove it if it's a deduct alt. Hopefully, that clears it up.
If I could just put some context to it, if you may. So for example, we do all this beautiful work. We landscape the campus, but we don't have enough money to redo the tennis court. So I understand in the presentation you said that you would basically resurface it but use the existing equipment, the existing posts.
Right.
So is that what we're discussing? We can't afford to do it, so we...
Right, that's a good example. So right now, in the base bid is to completely replace the tennis courts, which would include new fencing around, new pavement, all new net posts, new nets, everything. But the deduct alternate condition would be, okay, we can't afford to do all that new, but we do need to do something to them because we need to make them ADA accessible. So we would change out some gates on the existing fence and then we would have, we would repair the cracks in the current, in the existing pavement and repaint the lines, but it would not be all-new pavement. So that was kind of a compromise and that's how the alternate is structured currently.
Right, and I think that's what the trepidation is. So for example, you had this wonderful, beautiful stuff, but then, I mean, I'm not saying that you would do shoddy work, but then you had this eyesore over here where this patchwork tennis court. And I think that's where the, some of the reservations come in, how will it work and how, you know?
And also, who will make the decision about the alternates?
Remember that conversation last time? We were saying, who determined all the, you, us, we? That's why they just said, you get them, but now you don't. Because that was our main discussion last time with who, but if I could go back, I thought some, it was some stuff in the inside of the building. Can you kind of explain what you were saying about the locker rooms? Like what's, what, in the same way you just explained...
Sure.
What we thought it was going to be and what is maybe proposed now?
So again, the full scope of the project is in what we call base bid. But then another alternate is the renovations of the pool room. And so if you accept the alternate to remove the pool room renovations from the scope of work, the pool room is not renovated.
At all, like no part?
Correct.
So you'll have a new pool and we'll just have what it is then, there now? Because I can imagine how that looks.
That's, that's in, you gotta, you gotta think about it a little bit...
When I went there, it's the same room and it wasn't nice then. It was kind of like, okay, and that was 90...
As I mentioned, we have, we have these contingency dollars that are built into the contracts and as Phase Two, so you can see, we have nearly $2 million built into current construction contracts. Those dollars need to stay there until that work progresses. And as the work progresses and unforeseen things become less and less and less possible, some of that money can be freed up to then go buy some of the things that we have listed as alternates or not buy, if that makes sense. But, and then similarly, Phase Three has contingency dollars and as we start to move through Phase Four, those contingency dollars also become available. So it's a bit of a waiting game and you can see that currently we have, we have $7.5 million worth of contingencies in the project. And our current estimated overage is 6.2. So we're hopeful, we can't guarantee where these dollars are going to be spent at this point in time, but we're hopeful that we'll be able to buy all of that.
Because I think, I'm just picturing brand-new shiny over here, 1975 over, like I...
I have a question. So could we get clarity on, on the deduct alternates? A question with us and I didn't hear the answer and I apologize if you already responded, but what is the decision-making process for that? So now that is flipped and I understand all of that, so it's in the base bid and we're looking at this $4.2 million in deduct alternates, you know, let's say we don't have the full $7 million, right? So let's say it's only $2 million in contingencies as we move forward. How will those decisions be made? Will they be brought back to the building committee? Is it going to be brought to the board? Like, how is that going to work?
Let's, let's start, I guess, at the beginning. You can see that we're showing a Phase Four reconciled estimate of $27,361. Well, if that comes in at $27,361, we know what we have to, what we have to pare back. If it comes in at $26 million, there's less of these deduct alternates that we need to accept initially. Depending on where we start, that will determine how much we have to take out of the base contracts in order to get the process started and what we will have to look at to buy back when contingency dollars become available. So it's not, it's... So it's, it's not, it's, it's impossible to state at this point in time what, which of the alternates we will need to take. It will become a little bit of a numbers game. Once the bids come in and we know how much we have to, how much we have to make up, basically, via the deduct alternate route. And then as far as buying that work back in the future, when the contingency dollars become available for expenditure, that decision will be Hartford Public Schools, Board of Education, Hartford School Building Committee, you know, it's.
So let me, let me clarify, because I think the question is about process as well. It was like, who will be the decision-making agent? And in this case, ultimately, is the Board of Education. But before that happens, because we haven't faced this type of an issue in other projects, that recommendation will be to get involved, the Advisory Committee, the Weaver Advisory Committee, right from there, bring the information to the Choice and Facilities Committee, have the meeting, invite, maybe it could be a committee at the hall, it could be just a committee, bring the information then to School Building Committee, and then comes into the board. So I think that it goes through all the process like we have done with any other steps within this one particular construction. I mean, we will have to do that, just to make sure that we solidify the process and make sure that everyone have the opportunity to look into it and make an opinion.
And I assume it's going to be rolling, right? Because we're going to get through Phase Two.
Right.
At one point, that's going to close off, right? And today is one million dollars, but it may end up being nine hundred thousand dollars or whatever, or only. And at that point, if there's enough, you guys may come with a recommendation and go through that process that you just articulated. Okay. So I have a somewhat connected question, Board Chair. So I know some of the contingencies, we're talking about overtime for some of the, what's the current phase two, I can't even remember, but just to make sure we stay on schedule, like, you know, the guys have been working, ladies working on Saturdays, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Is, when you have these numbers, are this like today's numbers or these projected numbers based on some of those calculations?
You're talking about the contingency dollars?
Yes.
Contingency dollars are pretty accurate based on today.
Okay, okay.
They are.
Okay.
That was a request from the Choice Committee, too, because when Ken did the presentation, the monies were not as accurate as you're seeing it tonight. So these are pretty accurate numbers.
I think the only, I think the only contingency up there that varies is the owner's contingency. Some change orders were just approved at the HSBC meeting. I think there's about a $60,000 difference in that owner's contingency.
And then just one more question, Chair, is you mentioned that there's going to be a state meeting coming up as you kind of present, like another step after tonight or through the process, but after tonight. One of the questions I have is in terms of allowable costs and those who are not, you know, obviously, you guys are well aware that, you know, we just got a bill that came back because certain costs in other projects were not allowable costs. Is that something that those type of details, when you have those state meetings, that you're able to talk about now, kind of front-load some of those conversations? So thank you for the explanation with the pool and the grade. There were some of us who were concerned about if there was a waiver, was the state, you know, the right department, I talked to that department, so I'm glad all that's worked out. But, you know, looking at that, and, you know, and it was somewhat of a serious list, right, on there in terms of what was not allowed, is that something that the state can go through and agree to do now? Go, yep, everything you said, this looks like all they should be allowed? I'm just interested in that part of the process because the other concern here is if we go into, well, I guess it doesn't matter contingency, because it might be all-state money, but the point is, if we, we may end up having another bill where we have unallow, allowable costs, if you guys are following what I'm saying, because we thought we could, you know, charge this time and this, you know, furniture and equipment or whatever it is to it and find out later it's not. Is there, is there any way that those conversations are happening now for this project?
So something really positive that I have, number one, learned and observed through all this process, it's the partnership with the different organizations, in this case with the state, in this particular case, the office of Mr. Costa Diamantes. We have his engineer and architects actually being part of the conversations that are happening now with the other teams. So we're not waiting for one particular approval to then go into the Office of School Construction Grants to say, oh, but how about X, Y, and Z? They have been part of those conversations six months ago on the X, Ys, and Zs. So I think that that's been proactive, that's something that we would like to continue, and we have talked to the state around, you know, this type of new partnership development. And I think that's, you know, to your point, yes, conversation is happening, it's, it's alive, right? It's happening six months before the approval so that we don't have to wait until to then say you cannot do that. Some of the tough, really tough conversations have happened during those meetings, really tough, I mean Superintendent sits around, it's Glenn Bill, sits there, too, Mr. Stallings is part of, the mayor is part of the conversation, COOs. So it's the Resco Office, you name it. I mean, it's a pretty large group. And, and yeah, I mean, we had really very proactive, very strong conversations, and some others that have been, you know, pushed back in terms of what we want for our children and the quality that we would like to bring to this building for them.
That's great, thank you.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? I just want to add one thing to the process. Could we flip the Weaver Steering Committee with the School Choice and Facilities Committee? So instead of the, the plan going to Weaver Steering Committee, then Choice Facilities can kind of, that around, is that possible?
So there's a, there are two different committees. There's the Weaver Steering Committee who's working around the curricula and some different areas. There is an Advisory Construction Committee, right? That is part of the process.
Hmm.
So that's the one that I was referring to.
Oh, the Construction Committee.
The Advisory Construction, right? And then from them, right, it goes into Choice and Facilities, from Choice and goes into School Building, and then from.
Excellent.
School Building to you.
Excellent.
Then you make the decision.
That is excellent, okay.
And Mr. Chairman, before you close, just to make sure that the public and everybody knows, and thanks to Ms. Glenn Bill, Weaver will be open in 2019. I just want to make sure that, that.
Yeah, say that loud, louder.
Date, it's 2019, that it's clear for what's the, fall 2019.
Fall 2019, okay. Thank you, because I'm going to start talking about that.
Thank you.
The basketball team, will the basketball team be playing basketball fall of 2019? At their home gym?
My son's going to want to know that.
No, so the school will be open, there will be no basketball.
So the.
And I, and I don't know that the basketball team knows that, the culture, whoever.
Well, they certainly should because Nicole Porter has been an active part in this.
We can have those conversations later on, but that's a very good point, and we could follow up on that immediately.
Is there an estimated completion date for this phase?
December, December.
So like mid-year?
I'm sorry.
Mid-year?
It will be mid-year. Mid-year, meaning.
Well, December of nineteen, yeah, yeah.
Mid-school year.
Twenty nineteen. Madam Superintendent?
Yeah, I just, I need to clarify the subcommittee. I heard you say that it is a subcommittee of the School Building Committee. So Weaver, Weaver Committee that, that is making recommendations around curriculum, programming is separate, that's not what we're talking about. This other committee is different from the School Building Committee.
Correct.
That's correct.
Okay.
It's an advisory committee.
The advisory committee is, is something that was determined to be required.
By charter.
Fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. And it's comprised of principals, teachers, community members, members of the, either the NRC or Weaver was the Blue Hill Civic had members on it.
Central.
So that we have basically all of the, all of the interested parties have, have, play a part in this, in this advisory committee. An advisory committee has to approve us making a presentation to the HSBC.
Right, so I think Chairman Stallings, you thought they meant the School Building Committee. This is different. This is another body.
School building, yes. This is a different body, yes. These are active teams that are actually working throughout, not only in this project, also for the MLK. So we have all different groups that are working throughout the process. And it provides an ample opportunity to other individuals to also voice their opinion.
Then let's talk offline, because we might have to switch this thing around.
That, I could follow up.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask one more question?
Sure, Ms. Brody.
So when we talk about the DME, and the Superintendent has said with, when Weaver comes online, because this is a shift that happens when Weaver comes online, and, and to some, sports doesn't seem that important, right? But if you don't have, you won't have volleyball, you won't have indoor track, you won't, you won't have basketball, right? You won't have all those sports that is, will be indoor for fall sports. We have to think about what does that mean? Because we've been saying Weaver will be online 2019, not, not totally. So I'm hoping that the planning around that, because if they were thinking, when it comes to fall 2019, we're going to be in our school doing this, that's not going to happen.
So can I, can I also say something? I mean, even, and I understand your point, and it's a very valid point, and we have been actually in conversations, both Nicole, the Weaver coach, and some other entities to make sure that we provide opportunities for the students, not necessarily at the school. So we have been in conversations with the University of Hartford for the use of their athletic facilities, so that we can bring the students, the Weaver teams, so they can continue practices, we can create teams. So not because we want to have the facility, right, ready for that time, that doesn't mean that we don't, we cannot have the teams in place. I think there are teams in place right now, and we don't have a Weaver building.
Mm-hmm.
But we have a Weaver team.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that we need to make sure that that's clear and the message is clear for the parents and the students. I agree with you. I think we need to make it as transparent as possible for everyone. But I could assure you that we have been in conversations, not only within our Hartford Public Schools, but also with other good partners out there who have vested interest in, in Weaver, in the Weaver campus, so.
And then outside of this.
And I could follow up with information in writing, letting you know exactly which are those.
And then outside of, I still just can't get over, I could, I could get over the outside stuff. The in, what's in the building, that's what I cannot get over, that is potentially, we're going to have new and very older than, old is me or older than me, in the building. Outside a tennis softball, but inside the building is what I really struggle with.
So this is where we will push back, and these two gentlemen here have been coming to tons of meetings with the team, and we have gone back and forth for like two years already in terms of certain things that have to happen, certain things that we would like to happen based on quality for our youngsters, right? So it's our responsibility to make sure that that doesn't happen. So we will have to actually look into what we have, the monies that we have, and make the right decisions in the right components. I know the pool has been a target, a contingency from day one, because, you know, like, it was very easy to say, we don't have the money to renovate the pool, but then the pushback was, no, we want an aquatics program as we want a team, as we would like to have X, Y, and Z quality, educational quality in sports for the students. So I'm assuring you that conversations are going to be pretty strong when, when, at the end of the process, like, they have been throughout the entire process, but more so than ever, that we're kind of like looking at what is it going to be impacted by what amount of money we have left.
And I have a last comment. I know everybody like they want to go home. So I'm clear, so the outside, on the other side of the building, that track is going to be done. So we're going to have new over here, old over here. So, but that side is a part of a whole, a different phase, I'm assuming. The out, the, the football in the outside track is just when we get to the other side of the building.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. So, all right, so we're going to put a pin on that, talk about that offline. I would say, though, that at some point, we should talk, have a larger conversation about sports. I know Mr. Hernandez was interested in having that conversation, and I'm going to put the CIAC on my agenda next time. So we should, we should talk about that. But are there any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I'm just going to read the motion. There's a motion, is there a motion to approve the school construction plans and the ED-042 submittal to, for the Weaver Phase Four Field House construction? Is there a motion?
So moved.
So moves there second.
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor of approving this construction plan, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed, signify by saying nay and/or vote. And hearing no abstentions or any nays, the ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now quickly, item 4.7, abatement and demo plans and the ED-042 submittal for MLK, and this is Phase One of the construction plans. Are you seriously about to read that book?
By law, we have to complete the entire book in three hours.
Oh, my God.
Only three hours, so it's nine.
Okay, give me a second, let me just turn my page and allow the boss to get set up. Let me see. So I am just going to, in an effort to expedite, I'm just going to read the content. State Department of Administrative Services and Office of School Construction and Grants and Review are required that the School Building Committee and the Board of Education certify that they have approved the final construction documents for school construction projects prior to the OSCG review of the plans. Once the plans are reviewed and approved by the OSCG, the projects are allowed to go out to bid. And Madam Superintendent, do you have anything to say? I know I did. I'm trying to move forward, sorry.
Just read it, no, good.
Mr. Kalan, read that.
Yes, sir. Good evening, good evening again, everyone. Next to me, I have Nathan Total and Jeff Elliott from J C J Architects. I believe we also have Bruce Keller in the audience from J C J Architects as well. So you're following the same process and procedure as we follow for Weaver, right? The only thing is that this is Phase One, and Weaver, we were talking about Phase Four. So we have done exactly the same type of protocol and procedure. We have brought information into an advisory committee that was put together a couple of months ago. We brought the information to the Choice and Facilities Committee. Then from there, this was voted on last Monday at the School Building Committee, and now it's coming to the board for approval in order for us to bring this to the Office of School Construction Grants. The reason for this is the abatement and demolition, which is Phase One of the school Dr. Martha Luther King Jr. campus. So with that, we do have a presentation, I'm not sure how deep into the presentation you would like to go because of time, short, or do you just want to ask questions? Because it's, it's only around abatement and demolition. So it's not really that the presentation is going to bring a lot of that information. Presentation is mostly around the process that we have followed and.
And, I mean, they have done a phenomenal job in making sure that they get the voice from the different community members. But I think that if we open it up to questions, that will be sufficient, unless you want to go through the presentation.
I would prefer to open up the questions.
That's...
Anyone have any questions about the demo and abatement of Martin Luther King School?
Is this limited to the built inside, and we're not even dealing with outside yet?
This is the right demolition, so let abatement, asbestos removal, things of that nature. Anyone?
I know that we talked about this, I just wanted to clarify on the record. So did we get the authorization for the space, the waiver for the space? Because I know that this is a...
We did.
The design that's in our packet is like, a bigger amount of square footage than is the normal formula for the state reimbursement of...
During our meeting, the Choice and Facilities Committee, Chairman Glenn Bill asked for us to engage in conversation with the Office of Construction Grants to make sure that we get security on the monies. We brought this information to the state meeting. And at the state meeting, it was agreed that, basically, you know, we, they were going to get, we were going to receive approval from Costa Diamantes just yesterday. Before yesterday, the Superintendent received the clearance, you know, electronic formal email saying, yes, we're, we're good, we send the information. So I think we're in a very good shape, and we did follow through immediately.
So before you talked about adding an added shift. So is that a part of this work, and that is already been approved?
Right.
Okay, I have no problem, I have no other questions. Anyone else? No comments, no questions, hearing none? Is there a motion to approve the final, excuse me, Phase One plan and authorize the architect to submit documents to abate and demo phase of the work for the above-referred school project to the Office of School Construction and Grants for their review and approval? Is there a motion?
Still moved.
It's been moved there second.
Second.
So moved in second, and all in favor of approving this motion? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, signified by saying nay, ayes have it? Sorry, Christina, yeah, we're going to vote now. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, there's a five, item 5.2, excuse me, 5.1, is certified staff layoff due to position elimination. Is there a motion to take the consent agenda up as one item, even though it's only one item? I know, sometimes, I'm getting happy saying that, though. Okay. Now, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda? Is there a motion to accept consent agenda? Is there a motion?
Still moved.
It's been moved there second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, and all in favor of voting and approving the consent agenda? Signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. And is there a motion to go into executive session? I know, I don't even want to...
Still moved.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded. So we are going to go into executive session. We are going to bring Attorney Julie Wild from the city, the Superintendent Dr. Leslie Torres Rodriguez, and Christina Santiago, as we go into executive session.